Mr. Crowe.
And Ben told me he will not be here today.
Oh, really?
Can I decide who's gonna do the...
Who's gonna get it started?
Well, Mark.
I might have to.
Yeah.
Didn't he give his privacy?
I really want to get his take on the whole budget then because I... Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. The consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen's sole request, in which event the item will be removed from this agenda and considered a normal sequence. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the city council minutes of August 27th, 2018, the revised version. Everybody should have that revised copy. And also the approval of dispersments through September 10th, 2018. Is there a motion to go ahead and accept the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on which they provide it and identify themselves by providing a name and address. Tonight we have Melissa Hunt. Melissa Huntington's gonna be addressing city council and she's gonna be talking to us regards to the planning commission. Mrs. Huntington, if you'd like to step to the dais, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city councilman. Before I begin, I would like to put it on the record that what I'm about to say should have no bearing on Councilwoman Huntington, as this is my deal and not his, as I am his wife. So I was watching via livestream the city work session on Tuesday, August 28th. While I was watching that meeting, I came away with the feeling that planning commission did not do their due diligence in the creating of a factual report about the potential building project on Ridge Road. So I decided to meet with Samantha DiMaggio. However, she was on vacation. In the meantime, I learned of a planning commission member sabotaging and undermining the project even before it was presented. On Thursday, September 6th, when Samantha got back from her vacation, she so graciously stayed after hours to meet with me. She was wonderful in answering my questions and my inquiries. During this meeting, I learned that there was indeed a member of the planning commission that went door to door in that particular neighborhood to talk to the residents. It came out that the member lied about the project to the residents stating the project was going to be section eight housing, among other things. And when this member was confronted about what he had done by city administration, he denied it and then recanted when the residents stated, indeed, he did go door to door. I want to make this very clear. This is not about whether the building was built or not. This is about ethics. It's about an ethical code. Conduct. When a person is on a board, commissioner, council, they are held to a higher level of standard. And I myself am on a school board. I had to go to training to know what I can and cannot do. I know for a fact that this person also went to training to know what they can and cannot do. This person obviously knew what was right and wrong, otherwise they would not have lied about it when confronted. Out of all the commissions the city has, the planning commission is one of the most important because it has far reaching consequences. Because of this, what this member did, we as a city will never know what the developer wanted to do with that land. And we also have a seller that's unable to sell. What this member did could have opened up the city to a lawsuit. It opened up our city officials to be yelled at, called names, threatened, and bullied. And that behavior is absolutely reprehensible. This member cost the city a multimillion dollar project. Think what we could have done with that. Mr. Mayor, one of the things you ran on was expanding our city in transparency. It is very clear our city is shrinking and has a lack of housing. Right now, it is a seller's market in La Sure. As a halfway decent house goes up for sale, it is sold in no time at all. Right now, we have no viable housing for our young families and young couples to move into when they are not quite ready to buy a house. Right now, they will have to go out of town and more than likely, they will stay out of town. These same people that wouldn't even hear the developers' plans are the same people who would like to have more businesses in town and would like Dream Giant to come back. However, how can we ask businesses to come here if we have nothing to offer them or their employees or a place to live? From what I understand, our schools are not at capacity. I am not one to speak, as I have opted out of the La Sure district. My children go to a different district, but I do understand the ramifications of this. I've heard people state the land on Kingsway was meant for this type of development. No, no, it was not. Just because someone believes that the case doesn't make it so. Just as the mall is privately owned, so is the land on Kingsway. I know the city has reached out to these owners about selling and they are not interested. We in La Sure are lucky to have industrial businesses such as LSI, Cambria, and Aggie Pier and other to offset our property taxes. Citizens in La Sure are fortunate to have some pretty low property taxes because we have these businesses in town. My sister lives in Belle Plaine. She pays $5,000 for her property taxes and no, she doesn't live on a farm. And I know somebody that lives in Jordan and they pay $8,000 for their property taxes. If we do not start to grow the city, the city will be forced to increase our property taxes because we have no more people to draw on. Maybe this project wasn't right for the city of La Sure, but we will never know because we didn't even get the opportunity to hear the developers' plans because of this person's actions. So I will end with this. I've been told it takes a vote of five council members to vote any appointed member off a commission. I'm asking the council to take such a vote. If you vote no, to me and to the rest of the city, you are saying that you are okay with unethical behavior and you are for a corrupt city. When anyone is a part of a board, council, or commission, we are there to have an open mind, not to be completely biased and not to be there to enact revenge on someone we don't agree with. So I am asking you to remove this person and the corruption from our city. I would also like to extend a thank you to Jasper and to Samantha for the hard work that they put into that project before it was even put forth. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Huntington. And as you know, we do not take action regarding public comment, but it's certainly something that we'll take under advisement as a full city council. And hopefully, we'll get a chance to go ahead and digest everything that you've told us tonight. So thank you very much for coming forth.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the city that would like to address city council? Seeing nobody, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to go ahead and close the public comment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is closed. We now move on to our regular agenda. First item on the dock tonight is six alpha, which is the 2019 preliminary levy resolution.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council. We have Zach Dowd in attendance today to go over kind of what we have already been presented at the work session on the 28th. So with that, I'll turn it over to Zach. I have just some key points from what the resolution is. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask Zach or myself.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I have some quick points, quick hitters basically on the PowerPoint here. We can go in depth at any of them at any time. I know most of them have been talked about over and over again at work sessions, at personnel and budget committee meetings. We've had a ton of them this year, it feels like. So overall, the preliminary levy is just a preliminary levy. It is not the final levy. It is not the ending number that we're gonna end up for the levy. Preliminary levy is set so that it's the high point. You can always go down. You just cannot go up. So the reason why the city always sets a high levy, a preliminary levy, is because we don't know some unknown things. We don't know complete health insurance numbers. We don't know final insurance numbers overall. Final CIP projects that we want to do next year. Other items that have to relate to the levy overall are still unset at this moment and aren't fully known. Coal is another one of those numbers that we're not fully set on yet. So we leave it high and we can always come down from that. Also to be known is that these are the numbers that are gonna go out on people's tax forms, tax statements that they get in November. So do be noted that that will be shown up there. Now, those numbers are not final. Again, telling them they're not final, they're preliminary. But if you said a huge number, then there'll probably be more people in this audience than if you said a low number. But again, you don't want to handcuff yourself to something low if you don't need to. So with that being said, we set a nine and a half percent citywide tax levy increase. Again, preliminary can be reduced, but it just cannot be increased. So we can't go higher than nine and a half percent. That relates, again, dollars are different than what's gonna impact a homeowner. So a homeowner will see about a 5.4% increase in tax impact. That varies across different size of homes. If you're about 165,000, which is about the average, you're about 5.47% tax impact. What that relates to dollars is it's about 100 bucks a year. So not overall huge dollar amounts, but it's about 100 bucks a year. So a key points that we did add to the general fund this year and then also changed from last year. We had some, we are putting in this year to have a full-time finance director. I understand having myself here is great and all, but having somebody here full-time would really help the city overall. I've noticed some points when I've gone through just meetings with Jasper and stuff that I don't have time to fix. I'm only here once a week. That's what my contract states and I'm here to do audit prep and everything else too. But I notice problems and I'll hand them off if I see that they're worth the point. Just today, I noticed that we've had some benefits that have just lacked or changed hands or don't have accesses for that I don't have time to handle as AEM. I could do it again, but it would cost us more money as a city. And is that really worth it? Yes and no. But AEM was designed in the beginning to basically right the ship in the city of La Sure. And I think we've done that overall, but having a full-time finance director is something that staff has noted that it would be very good to have a full-time finance director, having his backup, having an additional person in-house, especially when we have things going on with staff. So that change is gonna have a little bit of effect on the general fund overall. It'd actually have a decrease effect. The reason why is because the current finance director position that I am at is 50% funded by general fund levy. When a finance director is in-house, we have a lot of utilities in La Sure. So most of that will actually come off the levy. So we're down to like, I believe it was like 30, 35%, correct Jasper? Okay, so that'll decrease the overall amount that has to do with tax levy. So that'll be a decrease of the general fund. It'll be a slight increase for the utility funds. Those utility funds should be able to fund those with offsets and other expenses and CIP and so on and so forth that we're doing. We put $125,000 into condemnation proceedings. This was something that was started last year. I do not remember, recall the exact amount that we started. I think it was 25,000.
I believe it was 30,000.
30, okay. We started this last year and the reason why is we put condemnation proceedings into such a highlight is because we want the city to look good. We don't want the city, you know, when we want new residents in, we want to have new builders come in. We want new infrastructure in town. We want it to look good. We don't want it to have a negative effect when we have some of the dilapidated buildings around town or, you know, people haven't done anything to their home in 35 years or something like that. So we put some more money into the condemnation proceedings. I think it went well this year so far, but you know, 30,000 only goes so far when you gotta take Gueye home or do a lot of work to it. So $125,000 next year for condemnation proceedings. Hopefully, that will go down as we move further so that we don't have to put so much money to those and that could be freed up for more projects in the future. We set contingency at $100,000. Last year was at 75 or so. And those are dollars that can be used for anything basically. And that's the reason why we put them in contingencies because we don't know what other items could be. So we will take away contingency or add to it as needed, just for additional dollars in unallocated areas. So if something comes up that we can do or we could purchase a piece of land for a park or something like that and we feel that's the best use for the community, that is well worth our dollars to put it in. Streets and parks are now combined, which helps a lot with management. I know that that was one of Jasper's big items this year. And then an overall decrease again is of 114,480. So a significant decrease in expenditures. Any questions on those items? Yes.
Just curious, what do you come up with a 9.5?
So that's the overall tax levy increase. So last year, our tax levy overall for the whole city was 2.412 million. This year, our total overall tax levy will be 2.641 million. So the total change in those two is nine and a half percent. And that's how I come up with the dollar amount or the levy amount. And that's how, we normally go off percentages because dollars can change. I mean, I could change $5 in here and it'll change like .01%. So I mean, I could change it down if you'd like, but 9.5 seems like a round number. It's easier to understand than 9.435%, but that's how I get that. And then subtracting the 4% tax capacity increase. So why the difference between the levy dollars and the impact is there? It's because when home values go up or if we get a new house in town or new businesses come into area, that's called a tax capacity increase. So our overall tax capacity increases will offset the levy increase. So for example, if we left the levy the exact same, so if we kept it at 2.412 million dollars, our tax rate would go down next year by almost 4% because our tax capacity went up 4%. So we'd lose 4% tax rate. So our current tax rate's like 76-ish percent, somewhere right around in there. Give or take a percent or two. If we did, it would be 72% next year. So we'd lose our tax rate. Our levy dollars would be the same, but everyone's taxes would go down 4% unless your home value went up to offset that. So that's what that is. That's why the difference between those two exists and that's why I show both those numbers too.
Did we actually see our home values in La Sure increase this year?
Slightly. Last year, I think it was 162,000 is the average home value. This year's 165, so not an overall huge amount. We did have some new homes go into, which helped a lot. No, a small amount of homes does equal a little bit of tax capacity increase.
Just to clarify, the 5.1% tax
Yes.
is on homes that do not increase in value?
Correct, yes. So if your home stayed the same value. So for example, I'll use numbers that I have in my current graph just because they're easy to grab. But you know, if your home stayed the same value next last year, so it was 165 last year and it's still 165 this year, your increase will be $114 for overall tax for the whole year. So that's, it's, you know, it's not a huge dollar amount, but it is something to look at too.
Question.
Yes.
And probably for Jasper. Can you explain that condemnation proceedings? I guess I'm just curious what that money's used for.
Yeah, so basically, if there's a property in town that's dilapidated, that basically has been abandoned, that is beyond repair, we can work with the property owner to either get consent to do something with it and levy that back to the property taxes. Or if we go through condemnation proceedings, we basically abate the issue and then we levy that back to the property taxes. So there's an investment from the city to take care of these properties. We don't take ownership of the properties until potentially if the property owner goes into tax forfeiture. I believe the county's policy is five years of delinquent taxes. Then the city would have the option, the first right of refusal to get that property. If it's not for a public purpose, we would have to pay market value for that. So it would be basically be looking at properties that are in town that have dilapidated houses that maybe you can't rent or anything that need to be cleaned up, that maybe are a public health concern, a nuisance, or just a danger to the public.
So we pay for that upfront and then you say you put it back onto the property taxes. Does that lean back onto that property's taxes or?
Yes, correct.
So it's like a lean back on the property?
It is. So it's a special assessment that goes back to the property owner. Now, in there's certain situations where we can work with the property owner and get consent to do that. That's the easier way of doing it. There's less legal fees involved, but they know that, well, it's gonna cost $5,000 to abate this house. That'll get charged back to the property taxes. There's an interest rate and administrative costs that the county charges. So you know, that'll be more than $5,000 over time. So Todd, correct me if I'm wrong on any of that. Yeah.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say to council member Sullivan real quick, council member Johnson, is that we have properties within La Sure that we obviously have to take some action on. As Zach has alluded to, we want to do everything within our power to make La Sure an attractive place for all of us. And some of these properties have been going on for years and it's time to finally do something about it.
Agreed.
Council member Johnson.
The $100,000 contingency, understand what that is. Does that show up on the general fund revenue expenditure and changes in fund balance summary?
Yes.
Yep, so that is in.
Is there a line item there or is it in the administration?
It is in miscellaneous. So the $174,000 amount. $174,000 amount. In that, there's $100,000 contingency. Miscellaneous dollars, yep. So you're on the general fund.
Where does it show up under expenditure? If we were gonna spend it, what line would it show up on our expenditure?
We don't have a line item for it under expenditures. Take that back, hold on one second. It would be our projects code, which is, do you have the detail in front of you? I don't know if we sent you detail. Did I send you detail?
I'm just looking under expenditures. It seems to me if we're gonna spend, if we spend $100,000 on something, where does it come under?
So I don't know what piece of paper you're looking at, so I wish I...
These are numbers on page. I'm looking at the statement of revenue expenditure and changes in fund balance summary for the general fund.
Yes, yep. So underneath, it would be... It's gotta be under administration for expenditures.
Okay, so it's part of the
Administration dollars, yes.
561,960.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry. It's coded unallocated on my other piece of paper, so sorry about that. Any other questions on the general fund overall? Okay, next page, next slide, please. Community center, key points. As you could see on the tax levy change, piece of paper, again, I don't have the packet in front of me so I can't flip between the two pages. But the community center one is one of the ones that has the largest increase in the levy from 2018 to 2019. Most of it has to do with adding additional staff and adding CIP items. And we added a recreation coordinator position in 2018 hoping to create more stable programming and just easier flow within the community center overall. We want to make the community center a community item and we don't want to have it as a burden to just one person. We want to make sure that it's being used at full capacity. So I think I felt staff wanted to make sure that we wanted to take full control of the community center and having another position there really adds more abilities for us to do those things. Correct me if I'm wrong Jasper, but I believe that's what the overall agenda was for the community center coordinator position.
Correct. And that position just closed on September 4th and we're evaluating applications. And I'm hoping we'll be able to extend an offer mid-October. That's what we're hoping. So yeah, the 2019 budget reflects that, a full year of this position being active in the community.
Correct. The other main driver in those is that Lane, the current recreation manager, community center manager, whatever you supervise or whatever you want to call him, was 50% allocated to the general fund last year. He is now 100% community center funded only. The reason for that is that we are now combining parks and streets together. Previously, it was parks and community center together. So Lane was the department head for parks and community center. So those two were under one bucket. So Lane's salary was split 50/50. 50% parks, which is the general fund dollars, and 50% community center. Now he is 100% community center and then streets and parks is now together. So that is now under rich.
Zach, if you would, please clarify too that that's only a portion of his total income because part of what he does works for the school district.
Correct.
So you're talking about a half of a half of a half. I'm not being funny, but it gets confusing if you'd explain it, please.
Correct, yeah. So approximately 50% of Lane's salary, not exactly, but approximately 50% is covered by the school district. So we will bill them twice a year on a, well technically, on their schedule. So it'd be July 1st through June 30th of the year. So July 1st through the end of the year. And then January 1st through June 30th, we will bill them one half of a year. I do not remember the exact number, but I believe it was like $55,000 this past year, somewhere right around there that we bill them for invoicing for Lane's time. So we split Lane himself between the school district and with the community center within the city. So he's kind of a half of a half, as Newell suggested. It's kind of very, it's very weird, but it's easier now to understand because now he's 100% community center. Previously, last year, he was 50% park and 50% community center, which essentially meant nothing for the community center. It just meant he was funded by parks because all the money that comes in from the school district goes right into the community center itself. So like $55,000. And again, it's about half with benefits and stuff included, is about half of his salary and benefits, so.
Council member Fable, if you had a question.
Can I just add that this increase there is a direct result of a community center study that recommended more specifically time for leadership activities and evaluation and programming at the community center? So this is an improvement in service that we're making that does cost some money.
Correct, yeah. I think Jasper could speak to that the best. I just, I didn't have much to deal with the community center study. And also something that obviously that the council decided that was a very good item to do. And I believe in that issue, very much so, because I think the community center is underused and I really think it would be used more if we had better leadership time, which I think is exactly right. But I will let Jasper speak on that more than I can.
Yeah, council member Johnson, I feel like that's very accurate. The director's time will be more focused on the planning aspects of the community center. And this coordinator position will be looking at more of the operations, the functionality of programming, things like that. So there will be time. I mean, one of the items that was identified was developing a strategic plan for the community center. That's something that the director could focus some time on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions before we move on?
Okay. Insurances. I did budget a slight increase in all insurances overall, about 12%. Not knowing what we're gonna have in insurance. The big one is health insurance. I've heard anywhere from, you know, low percentages of two or three, which I believe is what Peep is at, topwards of 15 for other ones. I know that we're not part of that, but overall increases for League of Minnesota Cities Insurance and workers' comp insurance, everything else is just going way higher than ever anticipated. I'm hoping it's not that, so we can always pull it back. Like I said, we always do it high because I don't know what it's gonna be. But I'd rather shoot high and then pull back than shoot low and then we're pulling money from other funds and CIP programs and something else that we really want to focus on, streets or whatever else, sidewalks or so on and so forth. So again, most likely those numbers will go down, but once we receive final numbers, that's when I'll pull those down. I don't want to do it too early. The final thing is EDA change is .47%. Thank you for catching me, council member Johnson. I did not update the formula from like last year or two years ago. Whenever we implemented the EDA levy, I never changed the formula from 100% to whatever the actual percentage is, .47% this year. So the change is not 100%. I did not double the EDA levy. I'm sure Sam DiMaggio would be not as happy if I... I'm sure Sam DiMaggio would be not as happy if I... She'd probably want 100% increase, but...
Well, it just goes to show you that there's an awful lot of due diligence that goes on between Thursday and Monday for a city council meeting, because I know both of you guys get in a date with emails.
Correct, yes, which is okay, and I'm okay with that. And I stand for any questions that you have overall on the levy.
I have a question, Zach, if you would. I don't know, it reads on the top, levy summary, 2014 to 19 proposed. It's a bar graph, blue, green.
Yep.
And suddenly red shows up.
Oh, I didn't label that.
What is red?
Red is the EDA. Sorry. I'll make that change noted. Nope, that's .47%, but yes, 100% if you want to look at it too. You guys are really good, I'll tell you. Guys catch all kinds of good stuff.
We're learning. Any other questions before we move on?
Zach, would you simply review for us and for the public the timing of this? And again, emphasizing that this is the preliminary levy? And look at the other dates, so everybody understands what we're doing here.
Yes. So the preliminary levy has to be approved before September 30th of this year, 2018. I do send that information to the county, so that is who sends your property tax statements out to all the residents and all the businesses in town. So they will send those property tax statements as soon as they get the information. That's why they have the September 30th deadline. So we always approve this at the, we try to get it to the second meeting before the end of deadline, just to give us enough time to file information and get paperwork, so I can get it back to Jasper and have him sign information, so that we're all good to go with resolutions and so on and so forth. This is the preliminary levy. It is the highest point that the levy will be in 2019. The levy can always go down. I will tell you now that most of the time it does go down. Not always, but most of the time it does. And once we find out final numbers from health insurance and COLA and so on and so forth, again, we always shoot high for those things. We just don't know exactly what they're going to be, so we always start high. These are the numbers that are going to go on the property tax statements. Like I mentioned earlier, the county will send those out. So people might see a higher than 5% increase in their taxes. That will happen, and it's because of home values going up. As Councilmember Johnson initiated earlier, was that if your home saves the same value, your taxes will go up 5.4% or approximately right around in there. If your home value goes up more than that, if your home value goes up 10%, you will see a 10% plus the 5% tax levy impact. So you'll see about a 15% increase on your home values. That is something that we do not deal with. You will get those statements at the beginning of the year every year. They come in different colors, and they'll say, this is what your value of your home is going to be next year. Please argue it if you don't like it. Most people just throw those away, and I'm included in that, because it is what it is. But you can argue that, and that's why our tax capacity numbers do go down. So I get preliminary numbers right around beginning of August, and then I get final numbers in about this time, end of September, for final tax capacity numbers. But after everyone's all done their appraisal arguments and so on and so forth with the county, then we'll get final property tax numbers into the city. So all those final numbers, their tax capacity numbers by beginning of October, most likely. So I'll have those numbers for you when we talk next time. The final levy has to be approved before December 28th of 2018. Again, I'll bring that most likely to the, it would be whatever the first meeting in December is. We will have a TNT meeting at that point as well. TNT meeting is Truth and Taxation meeting, that is approved in the resolution tonight. That you'll have that meeting, and I will be here to present it. We'll have a PowerPoint presentation on overall tax capacities. I'll go over everything that you need to know about TNT and taxation and what the changes are, and where we stand compared to other cities in the county and so on and so forth. So we will have that, again, the first meeting in December. I don't remember the date right offhand, but... And then that's it. And then we'll approve the levy at that point in December. Again, that'll be the final number. It may not be 9.5%, it may be less than that, but it will not be more than that.
Just a quick comment to what you had just said. Don't throw those away, especially for those that buy, that because it's a buyer's market right now, or it's a seller's market. People that are buying houses are probably paying a little bit more than what they were a few years ago. And it pays to have the discussion with the county tax assessor. And I can tell you that in personal experience, I've had the cost of the house, when they look at this, because it's higher, the assumption is that something else has been done with it, maybe a basement finished, maybe an addition. And if they're not able to get in, they will make a change to the taxes, and it goes up higher. When you talk with them, they'll come back and they'll make an adjustment. I had in personal experience, a $600 reduction. Don't throw them out.
Correct. So, yes, if you get larger increases than that, we can't do anything about it when you come and argue in December, unfortunately. So I've had it happen more than once.
Are you going to go through more pages, or are you just giving us?
I'm just giving you an overview. If you want to talk about more pages, I most certainly can answer those questions at any time. My idea for this was that we had a workshop at the beginning of, or the ending of August, which Jasper ran so graciously. Thank you very much, Jasper. I was in another city, so... But I was not here. The only change that was directed was Personnel Budget Committee said, let's pump more money into streets, which is the only change from the draft budget at the end of August, was to put more money into the capital projects or the CIP fund.
Right. And that's something we're going to have to obviously talk about, because we just made that decision at the last Personnel Budget Committee meeting.
Correct.
Certainly address that.
Correct.
Yeah, I was going to, that was specifically what I was going to mention.
Yeah.
We didn't highlight that. But we're going from, this budget has an increase from $75,000 to $400,000 for this coming year, which is a pretty substantial increase, so I would...
75, I don't know where you're getting the 75,000 from.
That's what we initially had.
That was the budget this year for maintenance.
Okay.
Not for Second Street, but for general maintenance in the streets, right? And we're going to 400,000, at least that's what we're proposing. And it just seems to me that should be highlighted.
Correct. I'll have Jasper speak to that. He knows more about that item.
Yeah, so if you look at this capital improvement plan compared to the one that was delivered on the 28th, you will see some changes. One thing you will see is that there's an item that's been added titled "Under Administration", and this is in the CIP, Comprehensive Plan Contingency Fund. So there's a $50,000 allocation for that. That's kind of an earmark for items related to the comprehensive plan. We don't know what those are. That might be engineering that's needed to look at something if something comes up. But it's there. It would need city council authorization in order to expend those dollars. But we have some money earmarked for something related to the comprehensive plan. The allocation that Councilmember Johnson was alluding to, if you look at the CIP Streets and Parks, you'll see annual street maintenance projects, project number SP004. In 2017 and 2018, we allocated $75,000 each year to that line item. And what that specifically does is it looks at our streets as a whole, curb, gutter, sidewalks, surface of the street, and it looks at if there's any repairs that are needed. Now, the $75,000 essentially covered a crack seal project and a seal coat project. That'll also be occurring with this 400,000, but there's 325,000 that will be allocated to do patching in various areas. There's a lot of cul-de-sacs that need some work. Just in general, there'll be some more larger scale things that will contract out, that'll address a lot of the issues. It's kind of, I wouldn't call it a stopgap, because it's something we're going to have to do, and we're going to have to continuously do it. But it's very good to start investing this much money into just maintenance. There will be projects that come up too, that you have to also plan for. You know, after the 112 turnback project, the idea is that we'll try to do a reconstruct project every other year when some bonding capacity opens up. So this is just strictly for street surface maintenance. So curb, gutter, if there's some sidewalk issues, we could work that in. And then just patching, pothole work, things like that, along with the seal coating and crack sealing projects.
Is that all streets or just city maintained streets?
Those are just city maintained streets, so not county and state highways that run through our city. If there's major projects on those, the county and state take care of those. But there will be, you will notice that the MINDOT is reluctant to put a lot of money into a street that's going to be reconstructed in the next couple of years. So you'll see, you know, that route of 112 to continue to be in pretty bad shape until it gets turned back to the county.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, so everyone understands, this was, this adjustment, this increase in the amount for this line item was discussed very heartily with the planning, excuse me, personnel and budget. You'll look at it, it also increases in future years. And as Jasper just mentioned, there's also the issue of bonding capacity, where in the future we'll have more ability to do that if we need to. What we're trying to do is meet that streets plan that we adopted last meeting and look to the forwards, so that we're not paying more for something that we could prevent. And I think it's the best we can do at this point with a plan. But it is a plan, and that's a very important piece of what this council's trying to do overall. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, just to piggyback on Councilmember Krogman, just to make sure that everybody understands, we need $840,000 a year to go ahead and maintain our streets.
Say that number again, please.
$840,000 a year to maintain our streets in the city of La Sure over the next 40 years. That's $33.6 million. That's why we came up with a pavement management plan. We are starting to go ahead and adhere to that. The reason why that number is not 840 and it's 400 this year is because we're looking at our major projects in the future, such as the 112 turnback project, where additional monies will be put in to the fund to go ahead and take care of those types of things. But just remember, 75,000 in the past for streets as opposed to now 400,000. And going up through 2023, we're looking at increasing that to 650,000. So this is something that certainly has not happened in La Sure in a very long time.
Piggybacking on that, part of having the pavement plan and identifying the streets, putting together a plan for what streets need to be taken care of, when having the fund set aside makes us look far, far better as we're implementing these things to any money that may come available from the state and from the federal level, which means that we could be putting ourselves in line for, first up, for having a plan taken care of.
Correct.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns, thoughts? If not, our action request tonight then is to approve Resolution Number R2018-016, approving the overall preliminary levy at a 9.5% increase from 2018. Please.
Jasper, what came out, what was taken out of the budget to increase that up to 400,000?
So there were a few things that were moved, and I was meaning to talk about that a little bit. There were some recreation items like ice arena bleacher heaters. We're keeping it in there. We're basically pushing it back a year with the idea that if it's a priority, some of the groups will come and say, yeah, we'll fundraise, we want some assistance. So that was 25,000. There's ice arena coolant. We're in a pretty good place with our leak detection for our unit that we have right now. So we, and we have a stockpile of coolant currently. So in 2019, we're not planning on purchasing any. But keep in mind that if we have a catastrophic event that releases Freon, we might need to buy Freon, or R22. You'll see streets and, you'll see an item in here for, under Streets and Parks, and this is the major reallocation. There was, for parks and trail improvements, that was at $200,000, that was reduced down to 50,000. Now, keep in mind that that's, there's nothing earmarked for that right now. It's just, well, what do we potentially want to do with streets and parks that's related to the comprehensive plan? If there's a project in here, the way I kind of see it is that there's comp plan contingency dollars. There's ways that we can fund something if necessary, if we need to. But that went from 200 to 50,000. So that was the major, major change that we talked about at Personnel and Budget, and which was directed. So those are the major ones. There might be one other one that I missed, if I'm thinking about it right now. Oh, oh, Ice Arena Acoustics got pushed back as well one year.
All right. So again, to to complement what it is that Mayor Heg said, there's a lot of thought that goes into all of this. None of you went, oh yeah, let's just raise the levy up even higher, we'll handle it this way. It was still an argument back and forth as to what we can do and what we can't do with it to make it happen. So thank you very much, folks.
Well, not only that, but also to make sure that we address our number one issue in the city of La Sure, and that's the condition of our streets. We have to certainly do something about that.
I have two questions, quickies. On the resolution that we're going to be acting on, the .47% change is going to be made? The motion we made with that in mind?
Yes. I'll make that change on the resolution and send the updated one to you guys to have signed.
And then, I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but how do we know the other figures are right?
I will update them to make sure that they're up, that they are correct before I send it over again.
Okay.
You have my word on that. I'll make sure that all the rest of them are correct, too.
And then another question related to this money and these different funds is what happens if we get 200,000? What happens if we underspend our 218 budget by $200,000 and we have a $200,000 carryover? Where does that go?
So the way that works is if we come in under budget, if you remember from our 2017 audit, I think it was $87,000 under what we planned on spending. That essentially just rolls into our general pooled cash. It's in there. We don't allocate it exactly for the next year. It's just in there as our cash reserves. And a lot of times what we end up doing is we invest that into the 4M fund or another investment type fund. So it's there, it's available, but we don't budget to spend it the next year.
So that goes into miscellaneous under revenues?
It would, not necessarily. If we, let's say we don't spend, you know, we might overspend on one line item but underspend on another. And overall, when they look at the audit, they'll give us our net position change. And based on cash on hand, if, I believe our 2017 was $87,000. So that money is in our account. It sits there, but we don't allocate to spend that. We can, if we want to, we could have our expenditures exceed our revenues by $87,000 if we want to try to spend it that way. But right now, basically, that's just reinvested. And $87,000 on a, you know, a large budget as we have is pretty good. You know, if it's the other way around, we'd probably have a conversation about that if we were under 87,000. But what we do is it just kind of gets reinvested and it goes into this fund. And we have a financial policy that we're trying to meet as well, as far as having cash on hand. And if you look at the back of the 2017 audit and you look at where we're at for investments, we've been putting money into investments since 2015, and we've been growing that fund. So any, basically, if we have any excess funds left over at the end of the year, they're just invested and they're used to satisfy that fund balance policy that we have.
I can also add a little bit on that. If, then we did pass in 2017 a fund balance policy that if you are, if we do spend less than what we allocated for expenditures, we were able to move those dollars into capital improvement projects to do those in the future too. So we did approve that policy in 2017 as part of one of the AEM objectives of the audit, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
One question. What goes to the county actually, just this motion, or is all the supporting stuff that we have here?
Just the resolution that you see.
Just the resolution. So as long as we live within this as our max, we're okay.
That is correct, yeah. So there's no specific dollars that are budgeted, so we can move dollars around between different funds and different areas of the budget and moving people and whatever you want to do. We just have to stay within the tax levy dollars. I did want to make a note that we do have about $1 million of LGA dollars that we use for operations that should be noted as well. About $1 million of LGA goes into the city that we just use for operations. Using this CIP item will help us in the future if that ever does go down. I know there has been talk and rumor that it is going to go down. I don't feel the same way, but doesn't mean in the next four years it might not go down. So if we have, if we do lose LGA completely, we have to add $1 million to the levy dollars just to keep in operations and keep moving forward within the general fund. So that is a significant dollar amount that should be known by the council.
Yes, exactly. And just so everybody's... Yes, exactly. And just so everybody's aware, last year when we were going through the budget process, I believe we had a total of seven Personnel and Budget Committee meetings totaling about twenty hours for those seven meetings. And we've only had four so far this year. So I fully anticipate that we'll certainly have at least another three more because we have, we have some tweaks that we still have to work out, but we also have to make sure that we're mindful of the timeframe that's set upon us by the state. So this is the preliminary, preliminary levy resolution.
Correct.
Okay. Everybody got that?
I just thought of one. We used to call that meet, first meeting in December, truth and taxation hearing.
Yep, TNT, yep.
And at that hearing, if something came up, citizens' testimony and so forth, that saw some glaring problem and they wanted something reduced, then basically we have until like December 28th to make that change from the final levy gets to.
You got it.
So that truth and taxation meeting, which is going to be December 10th,
Yes.
is a, is a key meeting
Yes.
that may necessitate another meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, even though it's not scheduled?
Yeah, that, that's why we leave it at the 10th meeting. We always try to have it the two meetings beforehand so that if something were to come up that we need to talk about and you discuss and have a re, come, you know, we need to come back again, we always give ourselves another meeting to do that. That's why I don't set it at the 24th meeting. I mean, I could. I don't really want to be here on Christmas Eve either, but we can have it at that meeting, too. Or, yeah, it'd be 24th, or 26th, actually, if we have to push the meeting back, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, whatever. But that's why we set those meetings, at least one meeting prior to the end of the year, so that we have time in order to, if there was something that came up that was a concerned citizen or we need to look at something further after the TNT meeting that we really need to discuss, we can always make those changes and still get in time to the county to have our taxes on the roll. If we do not get it to the 28th, we will not get any tax dollars next year. So let's make sure we make that meeting.
I was just going to say the final levy is due December 27th.
Twenty-seventh, yep. So gives us one day, if we have the two days, just one day to turn out. That's enough time for me to turn it around. That's totally fine. But it is a tight, tight, tight timeline just based on timing this year, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would move that we approve Resolution R 2018-016, approving the overall preliminary levy at nine point five percent increase for, from 2018.
Thank you, Councilmember Krogman. We have motion on the floor. Second for Resolution 2018-016.
With the changes that we had talked about, I second.
Okay. Changes are noted. City Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. With that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you very much, Zach, for all the hard work that you continuously do for the city of La Sueur.
Thank you.
We now move on to Line Item 6 Bravo, which is our City Council pay and board and commission stipend discussion.
Mayor Hag, members of the City Council, this is an extension of our discussion that we had on August 27th about council pay and board and commission stipends. So basically, council tasked staff with coming up with a couple different, well, I think came up with three different options, three or four, I can't remember if it was, three, three options about city council pay. And what I, what we used is essentially this survey that I did of communities between 1,000 and 8,000 people and looking at what their city council and what their mayor got paid. So starting off with those options, option one looks at what would be an equal pay increase between council and mayor. Basically, the mayor currently receives three hundred dollars per month. That would move it up to three hundred and forty dollars per month. City council currently receives 220 per month. That would move up to 250. And just, I'll make a note, and I'll probably say this numerous times, these pay increases will not go into effect until after the election. So these would go into effect on January 1st, 2019. So it's set up in, in that nature via statute so that city council can't just give themselves increases. It has to be after the election. So if we choose not to do anything, the next time that we could increase city council and mayor pay would be in, before the 2020 election. So that's why this is coming up, among other things that are going on. Currently, there are four meetings that we receive or that, that council members receive stipends for. It's MRPAC, MRVT, HRA, and EDA. And those are thirty-five dollars a month. What this option would say is just to clean it up, there would be less administrative time to track these things. Basically, the pay for the city council and mayor would compensate for the additional meetings that, that they would attend. The other item in this option would be that board and commission members would receive no stipend. They would basically be volunteer positions as they're appointed. That's what we're currently operating under. That wasn't always the case. I guess currently operating under except for the HRA, which this would, this would impact them. So the budget impact for this option would be roughly twenty-six hundred and forty dollars per year. Moving on to option two, and this is basically based on the average surveyed numbers. So the average for the mayor was three hundred and fifty-five dollars per month, and the average for city council was three hundred and sixteen. What that means would be an eighteen point three percent increase for the mayor and forty-three point six percent increase for the council. Now, that seems like a lot, but that is what the average is kind of played out to be. This would also be a zero, zero dollar meeting stipend. As you can see, the general trend is to remove that stipend. Administratively, it's difficult. The parameters for it, which meetings do you get paid stipends for, that has never been defined. So that would be where we would start off, or that would be the recommendation is, is a zero percent stipend. This option would be provide a twenty-five dollar per meeting stipend for appointed members of the HRA, EDA, or Planning Commission. And that would only be if they attended it. Those three commissions or authorities were picked because they are stat, not statutorily, but they're in, either in our charter or our, our city code. They're, they're defined in there. The one that is also defined in our city code is the Airport Commission. But I, I removed that one just, just because we haven't really had Airport Commission meetings. We've attempted to, but we, you can always add one of those in there or add, add any board and commission. But basically, this is putting that in at twenty-five dollars per person who is appointed. The budget impact for this, and obviously this would change a little bit if we'd increase the number of board and commissions, would be thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That would be an increased budget of seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the mayor and city council and fifty-seven hundred for board and commissions to do this. The third option, and I just threw it out here because a lot of times I've seen this discussed at city councils, sometimes they want this option, but it's just out here, no, no changes. It would just clean up the, the meeting stipend and the board and commission stipends. So it says a budget impact is zero. It would technically be a revenue positive impact because we would no longer be providing the stipends. So, you know, these are just options. Any one of these, any, any, any part of any one of these options can be combined with any of the other options. It's just kind of trying to put some numbers with some changes. You know, again, the next time that we can do this is probably two years from now. What we, the way that these are approved is via ordinance. So there needs to be a first reading, a second reading, and then seven days after the second reading, it's, it's in city code. So with that, I think that covers all of this. I'll entertain any questions you may have.
First question I have is option two, that seventy-four hundred and twenty-eight for mayor and council, that does not take in consideration of three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars that would be saved from removing, removing the stipends for the various boards and commissions, correct?
Correct, yep, correct.
And option two?
Option two.
So yet, none of them have, because I, I didn't, I, I didn't, and I apologize, get the numbers, the annual costs for the stipends. We could probably figure that out, but there would be a cost savings for that.
Because it's going from thirty-five to twenty-five?
No, it's going from thirty-five to zero for the city council members.
Yeah. So what meetings for the city council are, are, have a stipend?
EDA, HRA, the plant.
MRVT and MRPAC.
And MRPAC, currently.
So those four, yep. And, and I don't know, this is part of the reason why we're having this discussion. I don't know where those four came from. It needs to be defined.
I have a number of questions. Let's, let's go back to a basic. When was the last time that, or better said, when were the current rates for mayor and council members, for example, established? When was that?
We know, we know, it was at least 2004.
At least 2004, okay. That's a simple comment, not keeping up with the times. Okay. What about special meetings, for example, a work session of this council? Where does that fit? I don't see it here.
Yep. So that, right, currently, right now, that counts as a meeting stipend. So if there's a work session, which we, we don't have that many work sessions, but correct me if I'm wrong, Stacy, you'd receive a thirty-five dollar increase in your monthly pay if there was a work session. But we don't have, we just had one, but, you know, typically, I think we have maybe, since I've been here, three, three or four work sessions a year.
Well, you have planning retreat, of course.
Yep.
So if we have a policy, that should be written into it, that's what I'm saying.
Exactly.
Not left, okay, that's, those two. What about HRA, and I'm going to jump a fence now and talk about members of that commission. Are they paid by the city or are they paid by the HRA from their sources of income?
Yeah, I can answer that. The HRA pays for their member stipend. It just so happened that we were also paying for that member stipend as well. So there, there, I believe so. So they had this item, and through this HRA examination that we had done, they have this item called a per diem. I know that it's been brought up in the past here, and essentially it's a pass through from the HRA to the city and then back to the HRA to pay the HRA members for their, for their attendance to the meeting.
So you're saying they were doubly compensated, both for a special meeting, so to speak, as a council member, for our council people, and for, from the HRA?
Correct.
Okay. Now, for members of the commission who are not on the council, they got one through HRA, which is not our business. That's up to them, and they're, I know, exploring whether that's proper or not. That's not our issue.
Correct.
Okay. Finally, any indication of the MMPA, Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, realizing that's part, well, so is MRPAC, part of an enterprise fund? Why wouldn't we compensate that person, and I happen to be that person, but that's not why I'm asking, okay? If, if we have somebody who's traveling for meetings, spending as much time as the others, probably is important an issue. Do we never did MMPA, or is that separate in some way?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so either.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm getting clarification on this. All of which says, if we get this jumbled mess, why don't we clean it up and make it as simple as possible and not create administrative problems, create issues of who gets what, when. We're all here to do it, do a job. Everybody's committed to it. And I'll simply say, that's why option one appeals to me, because it gets us caught up, it gets us out of the keeping records business, and we're not, we're making it as simple and clear as we can, and volunteers are volunteers, and people who are spending a lot of time are getting compensated relatively okay. So I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Johnson?
I have a question. This, these proposals, options are based with the assumption that this, the council average, the mayor average, based on this one population, 1,000, 8,000, that's, we're using that as a, we're assuming that that's a valid number to use for comparison. And I'm just wondering what the distribution here on this, when you say it's an average in the 100, 1,000, 8,000, how many of those cities were 8,000? How many were 1,000? Does this, does this average reflect, reflect supposedly towns of 4,000? And if there's towns of 4,000 in this list, why don't we look more closely at them rather than an average of, of all this stuff?
Who do you want to, okay. Yeah, well, yep. So I think, stated simply, using population is very difficult with La Sueur because of all the things that we have. That's why it's bumped up to 8,000. But keep in mind that when, I don't have the exact numbers and the data in front of me, but when I was looking at it, there wasn't a real correlation between size and how much council gets paid. I noticed there were cities of 500 who had council members that were getting paid more than council members in La Sueur, and vice versa, where you'd have a community of 7,000 that were getting paid less. So it was all over the board. It wasn't necessarily, there isn't a formula that you can plug in our population and, and get a number out. It's, it's essentially based on each community's need. So that's where it's, you know, I just wanted to show a range. You know, the range was anywhere from, that's maybe something that I could have put in here as the range, but I think the range top end was 550 dollars a month and bottom was zero. Some, some communities do zero.
Councilmember Fabbles?
What's the population of St. Peter? Just curious.
Eleven thousand, nine hundred, something like that.
Okay. They have a lot of the things that we have. Do they have an airport? On 11,000, look at all of the things that we have and, and the, there's what, 15 different boards, commissions, or boards, commissions, and committees in town, that through city council, right? We're not a giant city council. I don't know how, how many everybody else is on for things, but out of 15, I'm on seven. I, and, and there's so many of those things that, the amount of people, it, it's not about the amount of people. It's, it's about the amenities that we have and, and making sure that we're, that we're represented, well represented through the city with, within those boards, committees, and commissions. I was curious, on, on your averages, I was going to ask, do you have any idea what, what the workload would, is for a council member in some of these conditions, some of these, you know, 4,000, 5,000, 8,000 people? Are they one, two, three committees or something? What's it like?
Yeah, I, the, the survey wasn't that in depth, but I was just looking up, you know, you bring up St. Peter. They're, they're more than us by quite a bit. I believe the St. Peter mayor gets eight thousand dollars a year, and the city council members get 6,000. So if, you know, comparing that to St. Peter, we're, we're definitely under that. So I, I wasn't able to do an analysis of, you know, different cities and how many boards and commissions that they're, they're on. Even in our city council that we have here, you know, there's some members that are on three, there's some members that are on five, seven, you know, it, it varies quite a bit. And it's really a product of, you know, it's a product of time.
I wanted to go ahead and say, I think that, so the community understands, with these 15 different boards, commissions, and committees that our city council's responsible to go participate at, we certainly do have some of our city council members that are more heavily involved from a time commitment point of view than perhaps others on city council. Now, that said, everybody on this city council has an awful lot on their plate, everybody. And it should be a situation where we look at this as the mayor is no more important than any member of the city council. We all have time commitments that we have to put in, and you guys have carried an awful lot of the things that in the past mayors may have traditionally been on, such as EDA as an example, or, you know, some of the other various commissions, boards, and committees. So that said, first off, none of us are doing this for the pay. We all understand that. But that said, I think that option two comes more in line in regards to how I personally feel for the amount of work that the six of you guys do. Because of what you guys do, it frees me up to where I'm not having to go to as many meetings. And that's very much appreciated because I do have some of the and that's very much appreciated, because I do have some limitations, as you guys know, so I appreciate what you guys do. I don't think that we should have a $90 difference between what a mayor and a city council member makes. I'm certainly more in line with, like, this $39 a month difference, because you certainly earned that money. So that's just what I wanted to say. I know Councilmember Johnson has something to say as well.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would, I would argue the opposite of that. I think the mayor position is, has more responsibility, more leadership needs, more time, and we would want that position to have more, more of that, because that's the position that leads the rest of the, leads the rest of the council. So I would, a $90 difference is, to me, isn't enough. I think that position should be prioritized, and anybody that's elected that position, the expectation would that they would be a leader that is available and willing to put in whatever time is needed to lead the council as well as participate in other committees. What I'm wondering here is, I, I, I looked at option two also. I wondered, I don't necessarily agree with the amounts, I think the mayor one should be more, but I'm wondering, whatever we come up with, could we phase it in over two or three years, rather than, if we voted for two, given a 44% increase in one year? Is it possible to phase this in, or has that become too cumbersome?
I could, I'd have to look into that, and I'd have to talk to Todd. I don't know if it's a, if you can adopt a pay plan for city council and mayor. It might be a, you know, every two years, you evaluate it and move it to where you think, and you might be able to give recommendations to the next council that evaluates it. But I don't believe, we, we have basically one shot to increase it, and then basically from 2019 until the next election, it's locked in.
And you can't say that for this year, it's gonna be this, and it's gonna be this year, I mean, lock in, a phased-in increase is what I'm getting at.
I don't, I don't know if that's possible.
I think you might be able to. I know that the statute just simply requires that any increase in salary can't take effect until after the next municipal election, but I, I think it's silent as to how you set that. So I, I think you could probably do it that way. I think it's a policy decision on whether you want to have automatic increases or not, or if you just want to have it evaluated by each independent council, that, you know, the board, the council changes over the years, so, you know, might not have differences of opinions down the road if you do that or not, but I don't think the statute prohibits, I guess, is the issue.
Not knowing what the opinions may have been on any of our predecessors, I can't imagine that anybody sitting up at this table wants to have this conversation, because we certainly don't want the people that we represent to be thinking that we're into this for the big money that we're all making on this. So that is, the, the easy option would be to go ahead and choose option three and be done with it, but then we have to think about the people that we are looking at. Because of the expanding that we've done with the Planning and Zoning Commission, for example, that's gonna be a big-time commitment moving forward, because we definitely do plan on growing La Sure. And we start looking at what we're currently doing right now. We're spending $3,360 a year more covering city council participation on the various boards, commissions, and committees that currently do receive the stipends. So there has to be a fair way, if we're gonna do a pay increase, it has to be a fair way so that everybody's time is reflected properly. And if we're not gonna do a pay raise, well, that's certainly okay as well. So that's why we're having this conversation. Councilmember Sullivan?
I'd just like to ask a question in regards to this lump together, city council pay and then board and commission.
Which option are you looking at?
Can we just separate the two, the board and commission stipend and the city council pay, one, when we're discussing? And the only reason I say that is, I have strong feelings for one versus the other in the direction we go, so I'd just ask that when we vote, that we separate into two separate discussions.
Why don't we go ahead and discuss what's on your mind?
Well, I mean, I guess I'm not very, I don't have very strong feelings either way with a raise for city council members, but I do strongly feel that we should be compensating our committee members, even though they're volunteers, only because in the past, I've seen we've struggled to fill some of those spots, and I feel those committees are important. So I don't have strong feelings with the, the raise one way or the other for us. But I do strongly feel that, that side of it, I, I feel that's important. So I guess I'd just ask that we separate the two when we're doing a vote.
It's certainly worth noting, and again, for the record, just so everybody understands, we do have problems getting good, qualified applicants that want to step to the line and, you know, serve the city in various capacities. I can think of at least one board right now that it's very difficult for them to have any meetings, because they'd never have a quorum. So we have to do something about that. Again, I can't imagine that anybody would want to go ahead and serve on a board, committee, or council, you know, to specifically get an extra $25 a month to attend a meeting, but perhaps they might. I don't know. That's an extra $300 a year, because most of our meetings would meet once a month. Some of them meet once a quarter, but there's certainly a big difference in what some of these various boards, commissions, and committees do as opposed to others. Some are extremely time-intensive, and quite frankly, I think some of you guys might spend a lot more hours preparing for those individual meetings than you would perhaps a city council meeting. So maybe I'm wrong on that statement, but I know that, I know like in the early days, not to single any particular individual out, but I'll use Councilmember Favolies and Councilmember Huntington when it came to the Murpuck situation, Councilmember Wilkie. When we start going through and working on the Murpuck situation, that was an awful lot of hours that were spent trying to get that thing up to speed. So I, I think I could probably say the same thing for just about every one of our boards, commissions, and committees. Some of them have a lot of time involved, so. Councilmember Favolies?
I think that there's a big difference between having a committee and having a board or a commission that is actually responsible for, for funds and money.
If he does your responsibility?
Correct. I, I think that there's a big difference, and I, I think that, that when it comes to, when it comes to a stipend, I can understand having something like that. You're, you, there's a lot going into the budget aspect of it. You're, what we do even at Murpuck is, is, every bit is, is, our budget has to be out too. So we have to go through the same stuff that, that, the Personnel and Budget Committee for the city council goes through. There's more involved with it than some of the other meetings. It's the financial, the financial end and the ties that you have because of it that I think is...
Well, and essentially, what I was asking was just to separate the two. So we're having a discussion about city council pay and a discussion about the boards and committees.
So what you're suggesting is, people that are not represented on city council, we put that in one category, and everybody else into a different category?
So we're not voting on one topic, we're voting on two separate.
Well, and we're not, we're not voting tonight, anyway, we're just simply giving staff some direction. If I may, real quickly.
Please, Councilmember Krogman.
The, the first option, let's be real clear, it, it, it simplifies things. It takes the council and gives them $30 more a month, but we're not paying for any special meetings. So they're not really gaining anything, we're making it less in effect for most of them.
That is correct, yep.
And, but we're making it simple administratively, which in the end saves the city money. Okay, that, I, I think that's one clarification. The other is, when you start talking about boards, commissions, special things, the tax forces, you gotta decide who in the world, and this is separating it out, who are you going to compensate, and why? And I, I think it's better to say you're not going to do it at all. That sounds horrible, because I'm on council, and currently, I get paid a small amount. That's not, again, why we do it, but I think we have to look at the overall picture of what the city is about, and I would hate to think that somebody that's gonna get $25 a month more is gonna volunteer, when I really want somebody that cares about what they're doing.
Right.
Okay, I, I don't want to be crass about that. I understand people need finances. But I'll leave it at that. I, I, that's why I think option one just simplifies things and actually makes it fair. That's one of the concerns I have.
I'd like to follow through on my last statement, kind of giving a different point of view on the mayor's position in respect to the other council members. I think Jasper mentioned that in St. Peter, the mayor gets $8,000, and the council members get 6,000. So a council member gets 75% of what a mayor does. If we use the $3,800 figure average for council here and set up the same proportion, the mayor would get 5,000, and that would be 75%, that would be, a council member would be 75% of the mayor. And I think we should set up a proportion like that, doesn't have to be 75%. But the mayor, the leader, the chairperson, the person that's, is ahead of the council and leading the council, that is a different position than be, just being a council member. Not that being a council member is something minor. So I, I just...
I appreciate what you're saying.
And it's not just for you, it's for the position.
I, I understand that, but personally, the way I feel is, in two years, there's an opportunity for the next city council to come on in and make their decisions. My personal opinion is, I look at myself as an equal to you guys. And we all are in this together, we're all working together. You spend an awful lot of time doing things that I don't do, by being on these different boards, commissions, and committees, and in the past, I think, past mayors may have spent time on those different things. You guys have taken that away from me, thank God, because I've got so many other things on my plate. So I know I'm speaking from a personal point of view, but I don't want anybody to think that my job is any more important than any of yours, because it is not.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the other thing I want to quickly say, if we haven't, this hasn't been approached even, probably, I don't know that, but it hasn't been changed since 2004.
At least 2004.
There's a reason for that. This is a very difficult discussion. It looks like we're taking care of ourselves, and maybe not of others, or trying to take care of others, and we don't know how to do it. This is a difficult decision to make, and to put it off and say we're gonna decide now, and then two years later, reevaluate, it'll just get put off another 18 years, or 14, whatever number it is. I, I think it's time to tackle this, as difficult as it is. I'll leave it at that.
I think that maybe a way that we could proceed on this is to Councilmember Sullivan's point, where maybe we think about those citizens that are currently serving on EDA and the Planning Commission, and what was the other one? HRA. I think that should be a conver, the first conversation, that should be a pretty simple conversation to have. Either we feel that we want to incent these individuals, give them something for their time, or we don't. It's really a yes or no kind of thing. And I guess the second part of that would be, our city administrators recommended $25. In the past, it's been $35, I think. What are we happy with? Is $25 doable? Do we want to keep it at 35 for these individuals? So I see it as basically two different things that we have to come up with to handle that group, and then we can tackle the next part. Fair enough?
Mr. Mayor, is it, I mean, you're gonna make this point. EDA has community members. Murpuck only has city council members.
Right.
HRA only has city council member appointed. There is also two, three members who are not their community.
We're not talking about city council members here, though.
Right, and MRVT, there's only city council, there's no community people at all.
And that's one of the reasons why that wouldn't be even included. MVRT would be out, and
Murpuck?
Murpuck would be out, because it's all city council members, yeah.
So three are HRA, EDA, and Planning Commission?
HRA, the, the city council rep would be out, but the members that are on HRA would be the ones that would receive the stipend.
Right.
Okay, and in regards to the planning and zoning, again, whoever our city council rep is, they would not be receiving the stipend. It'd simply be the other individuals that come from the community. And EDA, same type of thing, are two city council members that are currently on EDA. They would not receive the stipend, but the other individuals that are simply citizens of the community, they would receive the stipend.
Right, and I, I can leave it for my perspective. I was on city council in 2004, and I was being paid $220 a month. As a, and I don't recall, and, you know, that's 14 years ago, so I apologize, I've gotten older. Is that, I don't recall getting paid for meetings, but maybe we did. I don't recall. But I wasn't on as many committee meetings then as I am today. The, the one thing that Jasper first started out this conversation is that he said that you can pick and choose, sort of like a, what you want?
No, that was me.
That was you?
That was me. That was my suggestion when I became mayor, yeah.
So as I look at, not my, not only my own self here, option two, to me, as far as the mayor and the council pay is in line with the population and possibly the time. As I look at like, packets like this, we got the last meeting that I'm studying and looking at, where in 2004, it may have just been half this. So time is still different now, I think. I would like, my personal opinion is, of the city council and the mayor, of opinion, option number two, but as far as stipends and board and all stuff, I see it as, what, to Councilman Sullivan, too, is that a community should get something, community members are. Because why, I, I agree that getting me sitting on a board, getting 35 bucks, and the guy next to me, who's a community member, who we asked to be a part of this, spend as much time as, he's getting the same packet we are, and studying all that kind of stuff, doesn't get compensated for it? And, and I, I want to make a point too, but the MMPA, I was on that board before, and, and we never, I didn't get a $35 thing where it was, and I think that's something that would time travel, would travel as well. And I requested for travel from here to Shakopee, and I was turned down by, by the city.
Now we're paying that.
Yeah, that's what I found out, so. I, I guess, I'm gonna just make, that's just my opinion, guys.
We're, we're talking about meeting stipends for certain groups. That's, can we clarify what groups we're talking about, community members getting a stipend?
Anywhere there's a community member, person in a board, that's where I say that we should have some type of compensation.
So we're talking about like, the Parks Board? Are we talking about the Parks Board?
Yeah, any, one that has a community member in it.
So all of these, we're going from four groups right now that have some compensated community members on it to 15?
I'll clarify, there are no compensated community members on any of the boards, right now. The only people getting compensated for those four boards are council members. Right now, there's no community members that receive any, any stipend.
Except for the HRA?
HRA, yep, yeah, that is correct. One thing I will note, if, if we are going down the road of providing a stipend to board and commission members, I just ask, give me a little bit of time to look at the, the, for, because none of these individuals are in our payroll system. I just want to make sure that there's licenses available for that, to be able to add them. Trying to think of any other logistics stuff in the background that we would have to add as well. You know, I think, yeah, so I just ask, you know, I know that we're not gonna take any action tonight on this, but that'll be something that I'll have to look into as well. And then also, to, to Councilmember Krogman's point, the administrative aspect of tracking these things, we'll have to figure out a procedure for that as well, which it can happen, so.
Councilmember Sullivan?
I'm gonna go back just to those three commissions that were originally listed in option two, the HRA, the EDA, and the Planning Commission. And the specific reason I said I have strong feelings that they should get that stipend is I sat here through the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting a few months ago, along with many of you guys, and we were here for three and a half hours. To me, every single one of them, no matter the outcome of the meeting, one way or the other, deserves something for giving up three and a half hours of their evening, four hours of their evening, to make a decision that, to move forward to us. And that's, and that's why I say I have strong feelings in regards to that.
Well, and you, and you're talking about the time that the community actually sees the individual sitting in front of a microphone.
Right.
There's an awful lot of prep time that goes into any meeting, so.
That was an abnormally long meeting, by the way, as, as the rep to that group. They're generally an hour or less, but yet, they're very, it's very serious stuff.
Gen, and, and generally speaking, but potentially with developments, it could become practice. I mean, I've seen other planning and zoning committees, that's a routine for them, three and a half, four hours.
And again, you're gonna be real careful here about where you draw a line. For example, that, that group, the, the planning group, went to Montgomery for training. Did they get compensated? Do they get compensated for going to a training event or only for a meeting? So we have to be very clear if we adopt a policy. I can understand the reasoning between HRA or among, HRA, EDA and Planning Commission, but I think you have to have the whole list in front of you and know exactly what we're doing. For example, does the charter commission fall into that category? Okay? I do not agree with boards, for example, with the, the new park and recreation and parks. I think we can extend this thing out too far, but we have to focus on, on these key ones that are in a way have fiduciary responsibility. I realize that the parks, recreation and parks has some responsibility financially, but they're not decision-making ones, okay? They are recommending. Now, the Plan Commission, by the way, is only recommending, but it's at a wholly different level, so.
To be clear, and I don't know whether or not this is a question for our city administrator or for our city attorney, are we paying mileage per diem for all of our city employees and any of our, like what we might be, any members that have to go represent the city of the sewer, when they get into their personally-owned vehicle and drive from point A to point B, are they all being reimbursed for their mileage?
If, I can answer that. If they don't have a pre-arranged agreement for like a vehicle stipen, uh, stipen, then yes. If they submit for reimbursement, there's, there's money allocated in the budget for travel reimbursement.
And from a legal point of view, we are required to go ahead and make sure that we pay for any expenses that are, members representing our community incur. Is that correct, City Attorney Coriel?
Can you ask that any more?
Any expenses that are incurred by any of our staff or any of our ancillary individuals, such as city council or any of the various boards, commissions that, like Councilmember Krogman's point about those that went to Montgomery for planning and zoning training, are we required by law to go ahead and make sure that we cover their expenses? Whether it be something as simple as mileage?
I don't know if required by law. As part of an employee's compensation package, have we dictate what they get compensated for and what they don't? Each employee might have a different package. I, I don't know what their employment relationship is. As far as the council compensation or appointed and elected officials, that's all done by policy by the council. Certain positions you're entitled to compensate, certain ones you're not. So generally, the broad answer is no, but contractually, you might be obligated to pay some of those depending on what their appointment package is.
And clearly, we'll, we want to make sure whatever decisions we make, we're taking in consideration what the legal ramifications are associated with those decisions. City Administrator Krogman?
We do have a, our personnel policy outlines what's, what's appropriate, what's not, what the amounts are, you know, for a breakfast reimbursement or a lunch reimbursement or a dinner reimbursement. So those things are outlined. The categories that are appropriate are outlined as well. If it's city business, you know, you're, you're able to get reimbursed for that if you're using your own personal vehicle. It also says in there that if, you know, if there's a city vehicle available, you should take that and not just use your own. So the, we have policy that's been adopted for that type of thing. You know, we defer to the, I believe the IRS mileage every year, that changes. So we have, we have things in place to address those. But I don't think there's any legal obligation to do so, but we do have policy.
Mr. City Administrator, Mayor, if I may, as, as this whole thing is spelled out eventually, I think we have to realize there are different categories that we should clearly have addressed. One would be stipends. If a volunteer member of the community serves on a commission, let's say, we'd want to know what the stipend is per meeting. We also have to look at mileage and we have to look at registration fees. For example, if somebody goes to a particular training event, sometimes that's not even realized that somebody paid a group registration fee. We need to make it clear that the city will pay for that, okay? When the mayor or I, for example, recently have attended, in his case, mayor meetings, or if I've gone to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities meetings, or if my colleague Roloff went up for Legislative Action Day and, and for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, yeah, we can claim mileage, but we need to make that very clear.
Yes.
Okay? I doubt that most people on, we'll call them volunteer positions, non-city council, are going to be traveling where they need mileage, although when people went to Montgomery, maybe that's the case. So we need to make it clear one way or the other. That's the fairness issue that I'm talking about. I can, I'm beginning to understand better how we could want to compensate some of them, and I agree with Councilmember Sullivan, that we should just separate the two, because they're, you're talking different things. But it's time to get on with this and figure it out.
City Administrator.
If I may, I think I'm hearing general kind of direction, I would say, but I would, I would recommend that we focus on the city council, because that's more of a timely issue than the board and commissions. I think, from what I'm understanding, is that the board and commission stuff, we're going to have to do a little bit more research into and, and kind of refine that. Unless you want to do that tonight, we could definitely work through that. But the city council, if there is an increase or a change, we need to get that onto the agenda in a very near meeting. So if, if that's something that we want to focus our energy on, we could do that and then bring back the board and commission discussion, because they are two separate things, you know? So that would be my recommendation, unless you, you guys want to work through the board and commission stuff tonight, we could definitely do that as well.
One last question.
Councilmember Sullivan.
So looking at option two, the meeting stipen, 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 that would mean you would not get stipened for any additional committee meetings you're on, and any special meetings that are called or work sessions, you would not get?
No, the special meetings, we'd still have that thirty-five dollar rate, correct?
No.
We would, oh, that's gone too?
That would, it would be just basically, you'd be a salaried employee and you'd get this much per month. And every meeting that you're participating in, public events, all this stuff, you would be compensated that one base rate for.
I stand corrected, I, because I think we've had three or four this year alone, special meetings. The retreat, we had two recently, I know of at least three.
Yep, yeah, I think you're right, so three, yeah.
We could build that in.
You could.
No, and that's not what I was getting at. I was just making sure I understood what it, what we were saying there.
No, I'm, I'm glad that you asked questions. I was actually thinking that, that we'd continue to get the, the special meeting thing, but yeah, now that we know. Did you have something else you wanted?
Well, no, I was just looking at it and you break that down, you break down what it, what it amounts to be, what that raise amounts to be, or the number amounts to be, and it's like three meetings, three additional meetings that you would be basically getting compensated for, if you broke it down to the thirty-five dollars stipend that we're getting currently. So guys like Johnny that are on seven, I mean, potentially, I mean, it's, that, I mean, that number seems the most realistic with the times. I mean, if, if there hasn't been a raise since two thousand and four, and I'm not doing it for the money, I'm not.
Well, again, we're talking two thousand and four, but that's all we can go back. Is that correct? We don't know. It could be nineteen ninety-five. We don't know.
Well, this discussion was had since I've been here in the last ten years, so I know it's been more recent than that that it was considered. I just don't know when the last time.
If I can.
Please.
You know, I kind of, I, I look at, at, if you look at option one, you get rid of stipends, I look at the guy that, that'll be sitting here in the future, and, I don't know. I see with, I, I can say that, that it's a step backwards, going to, with an option one, at least on, on a city council. It's a step backwards. There's a lot of work that goes into this. You take it seriously, it's a job. There's a lot of work that goes into it. I think that, I think that option one is, is, is going backwards. I can see option two, in, in reality, don't need a stipend. I, I think everybody feels that they put as much effort and energy into something here, whether they're, they were being paid on a, on a stipend or not. I honestly didn't quite realize that I was getting a stipend for the stuff. I got my, I got the, a check, it wasn't broken down, it doesn't say. I really didn't sign up based on a, on a cost, and I sure as heck didn't realize the full amount of time and, and meetings that we would really be getting into. Certainly didn't expect seven different meetings a month, and that's just without the meetings with either one, with any one of you, or with the city administrator, or city Sam, or any of the, anybody else from any of the boards, commissions or, or committees that, that ask for the time to be able to talk and go through things. Option one is going backwards, I'm sorry. Option two, I can see and understand, and I can also see where I don't need to be compensated for those if, I don't think anybody would if we were, if we were compensated where this is at, and we'd still be able to take care of the people that are on the, on the EDA. I think it sounds like HRA is paid for by HRA.
Right.
Stipend, so, that's my thought.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm just trying to, you, your comment about you're not on other committees or boards, you're on the, you're on the personal budget committee, but you're not on any one of these other groups?
Nope.
And is that a conscious decision that you made because you wanted to, you wanted to be a part from that?
No, I did that decision specifically so I could actually attend all the other meetings.
Okay.
So I actually tried to make it a point of going to other meetings, not all of them. And I haven't had a chance to go to all of them as of yet, but that was the intent, so that I would be freed up to go to all the various meetings throughout the course of the year.
So another, another factor in here is, I remember when I got on the council and I was on the EDA, Bob Broder was the mayor and he also was on the EDA. And, and, and so there isn't a requirement that you don't participate. If, if you do participate, you're another body that can help out with the load of the work.
That's correct.
So that maybe John doesn't have to be in seven groups and other people have to be at five or something. So that's another factor, and I'm not criticizing you, I'm just exploring the, another factor in this whole thing, is that you're attending the meeting, it's fine, you get to see what, the manager, what's going on and everything, but we lose your participation on the work involved in a couple of, two or three groups.
I disagree. I think I supply an awful lot. Any, anytime I'm asked to go to a meeting, I think I add an awful lot to those meetings, because I certainly go to those meetings prepared and ready to go ahead and participate as needed.
So you do more than attend, you participate?
I would like to think so. Those of you that have had, be at your meetings, what do you guys say?
Uh, he has shown up to MRF-PUC meetings, he has shown to EDA meetings, he, he always has something to, to put in there, and it's always pertinent to what it is that we are talking about, discussing. And, and he brings the mayor's version of, of what he sees into, into everything that, that he's, he's appeared to for us, so.
So with that in mind, you need to weigh the difference between those two scenarios, and what, what is going to benefit the council the most? And I'm not saying one or the other, I'm just trying to understand it.
We're missing something.
One of the things we have to keep in mind is that a lot of these various boards, commissions and committees, they either did not have a lot of participation in the past before this council took effect, and, or we've expanded their roles considerably from what they may have been. Let's use planning and zoning as an example. From where they were and meet on occasion, maybe a couple of times in a given year, to where they're now actually meeting twelve times a year, and perhaps even have special meetings as well, that's an entirely different mission than what they had two years ago. I know like, for example, the airport commission, they haven't had a meeting, to the best of my knowledge.
Not that we haven't tried.
I know, that's what, I didn't want to single that particular one out, but I know that particular one hasn't met. Uh, charter commission, that thing's supposed to meet annually, so that's a once-a-year meeting, but I think that's probably met, I think, two or three times since I've become mayor. Economic development, that's monthly. Fire commission is quarterly, and we have now Councilmember Sullivan attending that meeting in, replacing Councilmember Wilkie. MMPA is monthly, and I know that in many cases, both our city administrator and Councilmember Krogman attend that every month. MV, the MRF-PUC meeting, that's monthly, and in some cases, that's even been more than monthly, because of, in the early days of when things were getting established. MVRT, I know that Councilmember Huntington goes to that on a monthly basis, and now Councilmember Sullivan will be attending with that. And zoning and adjustment, that's an as-needed type of situation. We've, we have not even talked about CPAT or RPAC, and right now, I think CPAT, you have meetings, what, every couple of months or something? And I think our PAC is, and our PAC is every month right now? So there's even a few things that we don't even have on this list that require some of us to be part of. So I don't know exactly what you're saying, but I personally think that I choose not to be involved on the micro level of these committees, commissions and councils. I choose to go ahead and stay at the hundred-thousand-foot level, let my council members have the opportunity to go ahead and lead and direct these various meetings.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and, and I, I know you're humble about this, and you do regard us as a team, and that's greatly appreciated, but let me point out three things I know that you do. Number one is, you have to sign checks, okay? You have to come in here, are they delivered to you, or do you have to come here to sign them real quickly? You come here, okay, they use a stamp? We won't talk about it then, it's too easy.
I really don't do a whole lot.
I'd like to get that stamp though for my, okay, no. The, the next is public relations. A mayor has a responsibility to represent us internally and externally, going to radio stations, meeting with other mayors, whatever it might be. That's a big role. And, and the other is just simply working with the city administrator, city staff to set an agenda. So there are those little things that eat away, but frankly, they're major responsibilities. So I'm not, I, I'm not trying to embarrass you or say you, you know, you forget about these things. You, you're taking the team approach, and that's greatly appreciated, so thank you.
I think it's important to, to say that, that when, when, when I have meetings, I talk with Greg, I talk with the mayor on a regular basis about what is going on in our meetings at the, at, at, at different levels. And when I have a situation that comes up, or I have a, I have a problem, I have something that, that I know is going to be an interesting issue to be able to tackle, the first thing he says is, do you want me to be there for that? I already know that he's got an agenda, he already knows what the stuff is, I can fill him in with additional information. He looks the stuff up on his, on, on his own level, talks with Jasper about it, and, yeah, he'll show, show up for the meetings. I, and I, I think the point that I'm, that I'm making with that is, is that he's already doing the homework. When he says that he's freed up, he's freed up to look more into more of the other boards and commissions and committees, without having to make every single solitary meeting, which is what, when you're on that board, commission or committee, that's what you do, is show up for every single one. I, I, I like his approach to doing it. I, I admire the fact that he's willing to jump in on any one of these things to, to be there, but yet not be required to be there for them to do the rest of what he does.
Well, trying to get this thing back to some kind of semblance of order, let's go ahead and try to say, our city administrator recommends that we do something at the city council approach, and for the time being, not do anything regarding our potential stipend employees, if I heard you correct. We can probably get to that at another time, in the interest of time here. What do you exactly suggest that we do to proceed? Are you looking for some sort of a direction? I'm guessing you are.
Yeah, I would, I would like a motion with some parameters. Basically, just, you know, talking about, I think the reimbursement thing, I think we can outline in a policy, but for this specific matter, we need just direction as far as a motion for what you want to see in an ordinance. That'll, that'll give me direction on what you want to put in there. Now, you can always change that between the first and second meetings. So if you want to go from three hundred dollars, if you want to go, you know, with the terms of what's in the option two, it would essentially be direction to go, change the mayor's compensation from three hundred to three fifty- from 300 to 355, and the council from 220 to 316. The other thing that I would like direction on is if you would like to have a public hearing noticed about this. Now, that's not required, but it's at the prerogative of the city council. If you, if you choose, we can do that as well, if you want to have this, you know, have the opportunity for.
To that public hearing, would just be specifically to listen or to ask questions associated with this policy?
Well, and, and we, we take public comment on those items anyway, if they're on the agenda. The only thing that would be different is that we would publish it in the paper and invite people to come in for a public hearing on the, on the, on the change, on the ordinance. Now, that isn't required in our, in our code, but that's something that you can do, you can do that if you, if you choose. And that, that would be basically it, you know, direction on what you want to see in the ordinance, and if you want to have a public hearing.
And I suppose the first question we have to ask ourselves is, I guess, may, perhaps, is there anybody that would opt for option three? I don't think that that's something any of us are looking at. I think we have to go ahead and be mindful of the fact that we're looking at a significant amount of time since anything's been done on this, and to what councilmember Krugman said, we have to do something. We just can't let this thing fester for the next term, or the next term, or whatever. Councilmember Sullivan?
Go ahead and like to make a motion that we increase the city council pay from 220 a month to 310.
316?
310. And the mayor pay from $300 a month to 360 with a public hearing.
You're asking for an ordinance to that effect, correct?
Correct.
Would you say it again, please, by Mr. Mayor? Could we have that repeated?
City council pay 220 a month currently to 310. Mayor pay 300 a month currently to 360 with a hearing.
With a public hearing.
What about a stipend? No stipends for any means?
No stipends, following the rest of option number two's guidelines.
Okay, so we have a motion that we follow to some degree, option two, with a couple of modifications, 220 to 310 for city council members, 300 to 360 for mayor, no stipends, and I'm guessing that this has nothing to do with the public?
Correct. I was just going to state that, so.
That we're just talking about city council at this point?
Option two, no, it's minus the board and commission stuff.
Okay, and of course, we hold a public hearing, so we can be 100% transparent for our community.
Correct.
So there's a motion, is there a second to this motion?
I'll second that.
Is there any additional discussion?
Yeah, I'd like, I think the mayor should be 400. Ratio right now is, is about councilmember 70% of the mayor, and, and if the council is 310, then I think the mayor should be 400.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I realize that could be handled at the ordinance time, but a proper way to do it now, he could make a motion to amend, if he gets a second, we decide. If not, it's defeated.
Okay, so your, councilmember Johnson is making a motion to go ahead and increase the mayor to 400, and this would be, this would require a second, otherwise it dies. Is there anybody that's willing to make a second on that? So that dies, so we go back to the original motion, which is the 220 to 310, and the 300 to 360, no stipends and a public hearing. We have a motion, we have a second, any additional discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so 5-1. Okay, and your reason for denial would be?
I think the mayor should have more, I should think the mayor should have 400.
I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so, let's move on now to line item six, Charlie, which is, or do we want to address the portion associated with the stipends, or we're going to do that another time?
If I may, one thing that might help guide the discussion too, and I, probably myself and the city attorney have been looking through the code, there is a, there is a section in our code, 33.039, it's under the planning commission, and it says, I'll read it verbatim, "Within 10 days of appointment of members of the planning commission and before entering upon, upon the duties thereof, each appointed member of the commission shall qualify by subscribing and filing with the city clerk his or her oath of office. All members of the commission and of the advisory committee shall serve without compensation. Expenditures of the commission shall be limited to amounts appropriated therefore and approved by city council." So, this is a new development that we should evaluate and look at, but in our city code, planning commission members can't be compensated.
When was that modified?
19, well, it was formed, it was passed in 1961, and then it was recodified in 1973.
Well, I know that at one time, planning and zoning members did receive compensation. So, something is wrong with that document.
Mayor, the payment was wrong.
Or they were doing a payment without following the ordinance.
Is there legal ramifications to compensating them? Is there, is there a reason why that code was existed?
Good question.
Well, you're prohibited as a council from paying a planning commission member when your city charter code specifically states you can't. So the ramifications are, you get hammered in your audit, or you get taxpayer lawsuits for spending money that you're not supposed to spend. If you want to change it, you've got to change the city charter.
Right, and I guess that's where my question, that's where I was going with my question.
You don't have the authority to pay.
Right, but if, if it came down to changing something in the charter, is there any legal ramifications to doing so at that point?
Well, is there an ethical?
Or, maybe that's a better way of stating it.
If you change your city code to allow for the compensation of planning commission members, then you, you have the authority to make that decision.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so there, there'd be some other things that we should look at if that's the road that we want to go down, just to make sure there aren't other things in our, our code. And this is in the code, not the charter, so this would be a city council ordinance or city council direction to change it. But if that's the road we want to go down, I think we have to do a, a good review of our code to make sure there's nothing else in there for any of the other boards and commissions before we do any recommendations. So I would say just, you know, at the next meeting, we'll bring back more information.
That sounds good, so we want to make sure that we double check what the parameters are going to be for our EDA members, our HRA members, and our planning and zoning members, correct?
Yep, and we'll look at all, all of those, yep, same airport commission, everybody that's mentioned in our city code or charter.
Let, let me quickly say, I don't know why HRA would be on that list. If they're getting paid through the HRA, why are we doing it? Let's get that one off the table.
We should just cross that off.
That might be the easiest one of all.
Well.
And I'm not saying we don't want to fairly treat them.
That gets back to who oversees what the HRA is doing.
The HRA.
HRA.
It's statutory with the HRA's decision to compensate their HRA.
But are they not appointed by council?
Doesn't matter. That's exactly how they're appointed.
And if the HRA decided...
It's that the HRA decides how they compensate their.
And if the HRA decided to give themselves a, a $1,000 a month increase, the city wouldn't, couldn't do anything about it?
It's, it's within their statutory purview, they decide their own compensation, just like it is yours to decide your.
But we have a looking budget too.
That's what the state statute says, so they're, they're, however they want to set that is up to the HRA. So.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and allow for an opportunity to do some additional research, and we'll revisit this on the 24th then, regarding the stipends for those boards, commissions, and committees that would require, that would be eligible to go ahead and receive a stipend. Okay, fair enough. Let's move on to six, Charlie, then, the media com franchise fee and public educational and government access, known as PEG rates discussion.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, before you is, is an item that was brought up by a councilmember to talk about in detail, and I think we kind of foresaw this coming up at the discussion with the franchise fee. One aspect that has been added to this is taking feedback from the city council and, from the previous meeting, and trying to put some numbers and some service levels associated with what we have in for the franchise fee and the PEG. So what you'll see in there is that we've developed, I believe, three or four options for these types of things. One thing I want to make sure is very clear is that there's no obligation to use our franchise fee dollars for CATV or anything related to cable access television, but there is an obligation to use PEG dollars for capital costs related to programming or providing some sort of service or, or program, video, video programming to the public. So, I'll go through some of these options. I did include a, what's called a cablecaster position, I found, find it, found it kind of interesting that I noticed that they posted this maybe two weeks ago on the Savage Facebook page, and I was like, well, this is a good job description. I could not find a job description in our records for a CATV person. So, I thought I'd include this to kind of give a little background on what this position could possibly do, because I thought it was a decent fit. Option one, essentially, we'd hire a part-time cablecaster position, roughly half-time, so 20 hours a week. Programming would include all active meeting sessions, so anytime there's a meeting that's noticed, that meeting would be recorded somehow. Funding would be available for training, so if you start crunching the numbers, you'll notice, you know, maybe this is a $20 an hour position. The biggest challenge, and I think that this will be the biggest hurdle if we, if we would go this route, is to get somebody that can commit to coming to all of the meetings and, and doing all of these night meetings, and that'll be the biggest challenge that I foresee. But this would utilize all 5% of the franchise fee and the PEG charge. Basically, we'd look at getting some additional, some different cameras, as I alluded to, I think at the last meeting, or maybe the personnel and budget, I can't remember. You know, we have a system that works, but it works, you know, okay now, but there were some bugs, there's definitely better stuff out there. Our audio system is, I think, pretty up to date, but the video stuff could be updated. So that PEG charge would go towards updating that, maybe some of the franchise fee would go towards updating, upgrading, maintaining the video aspect. There would be a part-time employee, and then there would be training for that employee. One thing to keep in mind, we do have some infrastructure that is currently unused, that there may be a potential value for, depending on how we would serve this up to the community. Now, I'm not an expert by any means in this, but there's, there's smaller mechanisms for providing this content, I'm not exactly sure, but I don't know if we need, you know, multiple DVD players, or if we can use flash media, things like, things like that. So, there'd be an evaluation, we have to make sure this person gets properly trained on what equipment we have and what we need to provide what we want. But basically, option one would be providing content for all the meetings, you know? We'd have to develop some sort of mobile way to go to, let's say, Murpuck and, and have a meeting there, or if we have MRVT somewhere else other than city council chambers here, it would be good to be able to, you know, record those and archive those meetings as well. Option two, active programming of just the city council, EDA, and planning commission meetings. So this would be a part-time cablecaster, a few less hours, a little bit under half-time. This would just be for city council, EDA, planning commission, so just items that happen in this room. There still would be dollars available for funding, the biggest challenge, again, would be to find somebody to make, you know, all those meetings, just those three meetings, but it still might be difficult to, to get somebody to do that on a part-time basis. The estimate is that this would, we'd be able to reduce our pay, or our franchise fee to 4%, but we'd still utilize all of that PEG charge because of the capital costs of, of upgrading our camera system. Option three, we'd have active programming of just the city council meetings, and we would be able to do that, you know, special requested meetings that city council would direct staff to do. Essentially, staff would continue to program the meetings utilizing a different camera system, so the PEG fees would be fully utilized to develop a more user-friendly camera system. The franchise fee would be used to supplement those capital costs, and then any additional unspent dollars that are generated from franchise fees would be allocated towards street maintenance and repair. So anything we don't spend would be then reinvested into the community. You know, it, it doesn't have to be street maintenance and repair, again, it could be anything, but I think that's, through the budget process for the 2019 year, that's been identified as a very high priority, so that's why that's identified here. So, staff would estimate that roughly 2.5% of the franchise fee and all the PEG fee would be allocated for this, and roughly 2.5% of the franchise fee could be utilized for street maintenance and repair. I put this option in here because if there's a, a desire to not do anything towards street maintenance and repair with the franchise fee, you could just remove this and reduce the franchise fee to 2.5%, and we'd be able to, be able to conduct this, you know, at this level of service. And then option four would be active programming of just the city council meetings and special requested meetings. The difference between option three and four would be there'd be a longer timeframe on capital reinvestment for video. We wouldn't use anything other than PEG fee, and we'd use whatever would be allocated for franchise fee to go towards street maintenance and repair. So, if that's 5%, that would be 5% towards street maintenance, and then just the PEG fee to reinvest in, in equipment, things like that. So, this would be kind of the, the lowest, and this would be something if you didn't want to invest in, this would be kind of the option of 0% franchise fee, and just you, doing PEG for capital costs, and then not invest anything into any other programs. So, there's, you know, actually six different options that you could kind of go, and you have varying franchise fee rates going from 5 down to 0%. So, that's just kind of an idea. Again, you can mix and match however you feel the need is. Staff is confident that, you know, if, if a full-blown active programming of everything that the city's doing is what we want, we can do it at this, this 5% rate. The biggest challenge will be getting somebody to do it.
Right. So. Let me ask, let me ask you this, city administrator Krugel. Regarding the, your philosophy about what would happen if we were to go ahead and lower the current 5% franchise fee, what do you think MediaCom would do?
Um, well, I obviously can't speak for MediaCom, but.
I know.
It, it, I just remember when, when Mr. Grogan was here talking about it, you know, the, the cable companies in the business of charging people as much as they can to keep them as customers. If a customer is accustomed to paying $180 a month, which is their full package deal, or whatever it is, with all their fees, and then MediaCom establishes that, well, they're willing to pay this and they're willing to stay a customer, if we reduce our fee by $4, there's no guarantees that they won't increase their, their costs or their membership fees by $4 to make it even. There's no guarantees that they won't or will do that. So we don't know what they'll do. Ideally, they would reduce it and leave it, and then that, the cost savings would be realized by the customer, but we have, we have nothing in place to guarantee that happens. So, I think the, the real question is, what do you feel comfortable allocating these funds for? If it's just strictly CATV-related, that's, that's something to have a conversation about. If it's something where you see a need in the community, let's say with streets and parks, or, or streets, repair and maintenance, you know, we can, we can allocate funds for that, you know, just, just fine. We have another franchise fee that we allocate just for general operations in the, in the city. So, and the precedence is there to, to allocate it for city operations, so we have a, the one I'm alluding to is the electric franchise fee. We collect that, but it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with electric, after, the way it's expended, it's just another revenue source for the city. So, it's, 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 it's essentially a policy discussion and decision as far as where this group feels comfortable allocating these franchise fee dollars towards, and at what rate. I think that there won't be a problem expending the, the full 5% to do active programming of everything, but I, I'm not going to guarantee we're going to get somebody that knows what they're doing and is, can, can show up to meetings as much as what that will be required. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor is the most vocal person so far on this. Here I go.
I was just going to pick on you, Councilman.
All right. Let's talk about a couple of things. Yeah. I'm concerned about us, first of all, what this, what you didn't hear is that we're going to build a video system on the back of MediaCom customers that can be used for other things. Okay? It's not going to the MediaCom customers only, it gives us an infrastructure. That's number one. Okay? Number two is, this is a dying art. This is like building a lighthouse when GPS navigation will work. PEG, to have a cable, when's the last time, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Administrator, when's the last time we had this service about, you know, public broadcasting, the local channel? Four years ago?
I think three years ago.
Three, have you heard anybody say they want it? I don't think anybody wants it. It's gone. We're putting money into something that has a very limited audience. Now, I'd love to hear from the public. Maybe we need to have a public hearing, we have the next public hearing and let them come in and tell us if they want it, but I don't see a need for it. Hence, no need for a PEG fee, okay? Yeah, if we want to collect the franchise fee and get a little extra money for the city, I understand why we would do that. I don't think it's fair to everybody. Electric is pretty much everybody in the city, not everybody. There's some MVEC people.
Correct.
Okay? But I don't see why we want a PEG fee because we don't, I think we're building something that's useless in the ultimate, except that it benefits other people that use streaming, which doesn't seem real fair, okay? It's not beneficial to everybody, that's for sure. So, those are kind of my hits on this. I'll leave it at that and let other people talk and we'll come to some kind of a motion probably later.
Well, I know that the one thing that I'd like to say on this is that we do have a percentage of our citizens that do not have access, well, I'm not going to say they don't have access, they choose not to use the internet. The internet's available for all, but for whatever the reason, we do have that percentage of people that are not currently using the internet. And they would perhaps use MediaCom as a way of getting this information. How many of that 600 to 700 customers that are currently MediaCom customers would be jumping all over? I have no clue. I really don't know. I don't think any of us, I think it's all speculation at this point.
It is. And the other thing before I forget is, MediaCom, even if we pass a 5%, or if we leave it at 5%, it's passed, if we leave it at 5 and charge a PEG fee, they can still up the things
That's correct.
Which they have been prone to do and we're not here to discuss them, but it's their decision. And if they do it, it's on them. If we do it, it's on us, okay?
So, you're, if I hear you correctly, Councilmember Krogman, you're a proponent of keeping the franchise fee at 5%, but eliminating the PEG fee?
No. I'd be a proponent of, I don't want the PEG fee at all. I don't think we need it. I'll leave it at that, okay? But if the council feels we want to charge it, we want to serve some people, whatever limited number, and we don't have facts to make this decision, then I could see option three, basically, but taking out the last part after the end. As much as I want to do street maintenance and repair, pavement plan, and I'm all for that, and we've worked hard at the P&amp;B for that personnel and budget, I'd leave it, we're going to get a 2% franchise fee and the PEG fee, use it for video production, knowing it benefits others, but it does benefit our entire community then. So, that would be the option I would pick.
And from our discussion and our work session that we had with, with the MediaCom talks a couple of meetings back, repeat for me again, what is, was there a requirement that we have to go ahead and have the PEG fee or no?
No, PEG fee is in the agreement, but we can say for X amount of time, we're going to reduce it or not charge it at all. It's still there.
Right. I know, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands what I'm talking about.
The irony is, it's going to go up 3% no matter what we do. That's the weirdest thing about it.
So, what, so what option are you advocating for?
I'd advocate for no PEG fee, but I'd settle for option three, leaving it that the staff estimates a 2.5% and all of the PEG fee would be utilized for video production, but take out anything about street maintenance and repair. Because that's on the back of MediaCom customers. And I understand there's taxes and fees and sales taxes, but this one targets a small group. And frankly, if there are people that don't have internet, the odds are that they're the people that can't afford it or don't understand it and they may well need cable just to be informed, so I can see that.
Yeah. Is there anybody that specifically received any questions or concerns from any of your constituents since last Thursday when the agenda was made public?
Here's the irony, if they wanted to get it on cable, they can't do that now, so how would they know? Okay.
Councilmember Johnson.
Mayor Haig, just to piggyback and clarify what Councilman Krugman has brought up. We don't have the information we need to formulate a sound assumption. Your Councilman Krugman is saying we really don't know whether anybody's going to use this and it's going to be around very long. And on the other hand, but that's making an assumption not based on any data either. Is there a way for us to find out more about what the customers want? So that we can make an assumption based on some, something tangible rather than just make, making assumptions based on guesses?
Some type of a survey amongst the constituents?
I don't know. It seems to me that's the question we should be contemplating, if, is there a way to reach out to these cable users to see if, what their perspective is? And maybe it's just a focus group, maybe you just get, call on five or 10 and get their, at least try to get their perspective.
I'm thinking initially, the first thing I could think of in your shoes is, how would we even know who the cable customers are?
That was the, that was the point I was going to make, is that information, we don't, it's private, so we don't know who is a customer and who isn't, so that would be
Well, we know two. Sullivan and
Yeah.
Three, oh, and three.
So, I think a survey
Where's the majority?
Is a good idea, I just logistically don't know if it'll work. I don't know if we'll get a response rate. You know, we'd have to canvass the entire city and ask, are you a MediaCom customer or not? And then, if you are, answer these questions. But, you know, if we have a 10% response rate and only, you know, 30% of the people in the community have MediaCom, you know, we're down, our numbers are getting really low as far as having a representative sample. So, it'd be challenging and there'd be an obvious cost to it that we'd have to look at. I mean, yeah, there'd be a way, I don't know, I don't know how reliable that data would be either, but it'd be something. I think the, you know, in my opinion, it's, you know, you guys represent the people of this community. If you are hearing things that people, you know, want to have this as a, as a resource within the community, great. I think we have the ability and the means by having a franchise fee to provide that. And if that's what the city council wants to use this money for, is for CATV, we have the ability to do it. I haven't, I think I maybe recollect one person coming in saying that they wish they, they miss having it. And I think that person usually shows up to council meetings now. So, yeah, that's, that's my take on it. I don't, it's, it's hard to get some solid information, the sample size is very small to begin with.
Would it be fair to perhaps send out on our website and use our other means of communication that we have available to our disposal, to go ahead and notice the public, including what we're doing right now, perhaps next meeting? If you genuinely have one way or the other, you want to lean towards regarding this MediaCom discussion, please make it a point of coming to the September 24th meeting. If we don't see anybody, then obviously we know it's not a big deal for the community and we'll rely on the individuals that have MediaCom to kind of lead us, those that don't have MediaCom in regards to how we ought to progress. That's about the only thing I could think of that would be fair.
You asked, you asked the question, I want to answer the question. Has anybody come to me? I'm going to answer this question and then I'm going to quantify. Yes, I had all kinds of people that were, that were upset with the idea that the thing was, was closed down. And I'll tell you, now quantifying, that, that was back in 2016. Nobody thought that this was going to take this long to go through all of this and I haven't heard anything since, well, at least in a year and a half. It was a big deal when it, when it happened and people were upset with it. They were getting information there, yes, it was called the drone television. But there were a lot that couldn't get out to see the parade and the Christmas parade and things like that were being videotaped. School function things were being videotaped. A lot of the seniors that are not able to get out were getting information and seeing things from the city from that. But I don't know that you can't do that via internet now with streaming the way high-speed is going, that you can't just get the same aspect up there on, on, on our Facebook stuff. You know, it was a time when, yeah. Am I hearing it now? No.
So, we can put the giant parade on Facebook?
Sure, why not? On streaming.
Somebody videoing.
Once it's videoed, you post it. Sure.
Somebody has to hold the camera.
Somebody could stand on the street corner with their phone and do it.
Sure. You could, I mean, in all honesty
It's that simple.
You could, you could ask a call-out to the community to videotape and then have them give it to the city. It could be previewed to make sure that it's acceptable and then the thing could go up on Facebook.
Well, we've got, we've got our, I think we have our lines of communication pretty much open right now. We have our communications director, I see that we've got our reporter here, perhaps we get the word out there, then maybe by the 24th for our meeting, those that have something to say regarding MediaCom, show up. Let's know, let's find out what the public wants. I don't think we can proceed any other which way on this until we hear from what the public wants. Because I have never heard, had anybody come to me in 21 months now and said, I need MediaCom back, I need that PEG. Councilmember Sullivan.
I guess the only other question I'd leave with tonight is, what involvement is the school looking at having with that channel? Because we heard
Excellent question.
When this came up, that there was thoughts that the school wanted to be an active involvement with this. So, I just question what involvement they're looking at or if they are still looking that way.
Yeah, it's, it's good you brought that up. So, the previous superintendent said they didn't want any involvement. Now, we have a different superintendent, so I planted the seed of, hey, we have this access channel that we have, we have access to, are you interested in putting stuff up there? The answer was, well, maybe we'll think about it. I do have a meeting scheduled next week to talk to the superintendent in more detail about this. So, I'd have more information from that standpoint at the next meeting as well.
That would give us some more insight in regards to how we might potentially staff this position as well, from listening to what Superintendent Johnson may have to say too. So, I'd make, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and table this until the meeting of the September 24th.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Going down all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion's carried.
If I could just have clarification, so the direction I got is that we'll market, try to get people to show up, Stacy will make some really neat infographic that'll just get people really impressed and they'll want to show up and give their opinion.
And perhaps we might be able to get some assistance from Dana to go ahead and do something in the newspaper as well, I don't know.
It's not my job to vote for MediaCom. We pay them.
I understand.
Or even reach out to the
Coverage of this and that.
Let's get the word out any which way we can, you guys.
Or to at least communicate with us.
We all do a job of doing something about this.
At least to communicate with one of us if not show up.
Exactly. We now move on to line item six delta, which is the public purpose expenditure discussion.
Mayor Haig, members of the city council, this was brought up at the previous, previous meeting, just about some expenditures regarding coffee, creamer, things of that nature. Cities, a lot of cities have public purpose expenditure policies. We have, we have a purchasing policy that outlines different amounts that allocate, or different amounts that require different types of things to get, to expend dollars. We don't have a public purpose expenditure policy in place. A lot of times, these types of expenditures are outlined in detail in these types of policies. I've had extensive discussions with various council members, city attorney about this. Basically, my recommendation would be, well, let's develop one of these policies and really define what we have going on in the community so people know. You know, it's, we know what's acceptable. You know, for example, there was an expenditure, I think, the summer for buying Gatorade at Super America. It was a day that I believe it was 90-plus degrees outside, we had seasonal workers and we, you know, went around and we provided them with some beverages so that, you know, they could hydrate, you know, things like that. We can outline a process and some, some triggering points for that. But right now, we don't, we're operating on past precedents, past practice, things like that. So, you know, we can discuss this further or, you know, I can answer any questions you may have, but I think it's pertinent, you know, I think it's something that we should pursue. It's just a matter of the timeline that we want to do and I've spoken to the mayor about this and I think it's something we can work into some of the Personnel and Budget Committee meetings that we have. It seems like, you know, that group is getting utilized quite a bit, so, and I think it works well. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions you might, you might have about the process or take any direction you might have, might give staff.
Councilmember Sullivan.
So, to start, just to be clear, when this was initially brought up last month, it was not an attack on the police department. The question was raised and it just happened that last month, when the bill came out, it was in the police department. This happens across the board in other departments. The specific question was raised about the police department, but it, when the question was asked, it wasn't directed towards them, it was just overall, is this something we logistically should be doing? And through further conversations with Jasper and Todd, I feel a lot more comfortable with the conversations. And I'll ask Todd to give his take on whether it's a legit purchase, just for the record, to clear that up, because that's essentially, when I asked about it last month, that's what I was looking for.
City Attorney Coriel.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Essentially, the question I looked at, based off of the communications I had, was whether or not the acquisition of coffee for law enforcement was a valid public purpose. And when I analyze a public purpose expenditure question, my, I would say my duty is to analyze whether there's an authorized, either a specific statute authorizing the expenditure or whether there's inherent statute or authority to make that expenditure. And then, the decision about whether or not it's a valid public purpose falls on the city council as a policymaking decision. With the coffee at law enforcement, I think it's legally justifiable expense, given that we require and have a 24-hour police presence in this community and as the inherent authority of employing full-time 24-hour peace officers, I think the purchase of coffee is inherently in the authority of the city and the police department as part of their existence, frankly. And I have no problem with the three-factor analysis that follows that conversation about whether or not it's a, there's a public purpose to providing caffeine to somebody that's working 24 hours a day to provide the public safety. So, I'm fully comfortable with that. And that's pretty much where the analysis ended. I have had additional conversations with Jasper and seen a few emails regarding these policies and I look forward to working on that going forward.
So, just to make sure I understand, you used the word coffee and then towards the end, you used the word caffeine. So, if I'm a cop and I go out and purchase the five-hour caffeine-enhanced drinks or the Monster drinks or any of that type of stuff, is that the same as coffee?
I don't think your chief of police is going to authorize the expense in his budget for five-hour energy drinks, but
Well, you know, but you know what I'm saying?
It's been authorized to purchase coffee for that purpose. We can debate caffeinated or decaffeinated all we want, but
Yeah. So, you specifically referred to the police. What about other employee groups that may be getting complimentary coffee?
I'm not immediately aware of any. That's a different analysis given in, when you look at public purpose expenditures, there's got to be specific or inherent authority for that expense. I didn't go into a deep dive on the rest of the employees of the community as a whole, it was directly related to law enforcement services. I can work with Jasper on that as he develops his policy, but I wasn't asked to specifically look at that.
Councilmember Sullivan.
So, Jasper, at this point, would it be appropriate to ask that we suspend purchasing of coffee for the other departments minus PD until we come up with a policy that would address this?
Sure, yeah. That would, that would be, that would be fine. I think, um, you know, I think it'll take a month to develop a policy that we can bring forward. But yeah, that'd be, that'd be fine. I could, I could give that direction to staff if that's what I'm, what I'm giving here.
Can you clarify that again? We're going to suspend what we've been providing?
Minus the police department, we would sus... We would suspend purchasing coffee until we can have that conversation with Todd and develop a policy that either authorizes or does not authorize that purchase, only for the sake that currently, without direction from legal counsel, if you look at the packet, at the last page on the packet, I don't know that we legally can be making those purchases as a public expenditure.
But we don't know that we can't. Wouldn't we, why, why make a change before we develop the policy? Yeah, I have to, I have to tend to agree with Councilmember Johnson. Until we know what the policy is going to be...
Nope, and I was asking the question, I didn't.
That's fair, yeah, that's fine. Councilmember Favelas.
Yeah, uh, two things. First, you can make an argument that, that currently, right now, we have, um, we have two staff members that have been here all day. It's now nine o'clock at night. And, uh, you know, if I were them somewhere around noon time, I'd be wanting a cup of coffee, knowing that I'm going to be up all, uh, you know, until nine o'clock. So I have a, I have a hard time saying that it's, uh, it's more important for one, uh, for one group and not for the other group. I mean, we all want everybody that's, that's working with the city, especially with these types of meetings, to be alert. I think that if there was an issue that I had, it would be with, um, with disposable stuff, you know? We don't need to have, uh, disposable cups if, if an officer, a city employee, or whoever has a, has a, a, a travel mug, you know? Spoons that you're just going to wash, and obviously, we, we had an expenditure in there for soap, so they can, you know, wash a spoon. Put the spoon away, we don't need stirs and things like that. I, I can see saying no definitely to, to disposable stuff, but, you know, supplying coffee and creamer, I have a hard enough time saying no to it.
Would it, would be, would it be appropriate to ask that we bring this back to the Personnel and Budget Committee specifically to work out any of the questions that, uh, the remainder of you on city council have? In the meantime, our city attorney's got some additional, uh, research that he's going to do, and it certainly gives our city administrator and staff an opportunity to kind of go back and see what, what they need to do as well. And then we maybe bring this back on the meeting of September twenty-fourth. Would that be something that you guys would be okay with? Council, or city administrator approval?
The timeline, I think, I think a more realistic date would either be October tenth or October twenty-fourth, just to give us some time. I mean, we, we would have essentially two weeks to develop something and, and meet at the Personnel and Budget level, and I think that if, that, October tenth, I think, is more attainable as far as maybe we have two Personnel and Budget Committee meetings. That's just the only feedback I got.
Okay, but at this point, it seems like we have to, we, we all have some more that we have to do on this before we're ready to make any sort of decision. Quite frankly, I don't think we can make a decision on what we have in front of us right now, because we just don't know all the particulars. So that's, that said, would somebody like to go ahead and introduce a motion to go ahead and, uh, bring this up at the October tenth meeting, give Personnel and Budget an opportunity to digest it, and give our city attorney and staff an opportunity to do what they need to do to research it?
So moved.
Second, okay? Any discussion?
I have a quick question, just to be clear. Are we going to meet on the tenth? That's Columbus Day?
Well, it's going to actually be the eleventh.
Are we going to meet on the eleventh, the tenth? Just before we make a motion with a date? I'm not concerned whether it may be, I just, I, I don't know what we're doing.
It's the eleventh.
Well, so it's not a, it's not a holiday that's observed in the city. So we, we, we are open that day, so we can, we can have a meeting on that tenth. That was the plan. It's not like, uh, the Veterans Day where we're moving it a day. If you want to move it, we can, um, but we just need, we just need adequate notice to do that, but, um, yeah, we, the plan was to have a meeting on the tenth.
I just want to be clear.
I need clarification on your, this and, but I heard Jasper say he's, he wanted to start developing a, a public purpose expenditure policy and work with Todd on that, and then bring that to the, uh, the Personnel and Budget Group?
What I'll do is I'll gather a bunch of these public purpose expenditure policies and look at them and pull out stuff that I feel is applicable, applicable to, uh, the city of La Sure, um, and then bring something back to the Personnel and Budget, and then you guys can, can look at it. And I'll make a clarification, I meant October eighth, that's a Monday. The, the tenth is a Wednesday, but, yeah. So I, I misspoke, it was October eighth, um, would be, would be the day that I would recommend that we bring it forward. So, yeah, I, the staff will develop, they'll develop the policy, um, using outside resources, legal counsel, and then we'll bring something to the Personnel and Budget to look at and evaluate.
Okay, so it's ready, the public purpose expenditure policy draft that we're going to be considering both at the Personnel and Budget Committee and bring back to the council?
Yep, so Personnel and Budget will look at it first before the eighth, and then on the eighth, we'll have an agenda item to look at, probably a Personnel and Budget recommendation.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Just to be clear for everybody, um, in trying to get the answer to the question that was initially posed to me, I've done extensive research in the last two or three weeks. And in talking to Todd today, I got a lot of my questions answered, but I also heard back from League of Minnesota Cities with very similar answers that basically piggyback right off his. But the one thing the League of Minnesota City stressed was that if this is something you're doing, you should have a policy that dictates that. And that's, they said that's really, the League of Minnesota City said that's really where it becomes a gray area, is when you're authorizing expenditures that you don't have a policy to stand behind. And that's where the, where my question was posed, do we suspend that at this point? So that's why I'm asking, I'm not... Right, I just want to make sure we're authorizing expenses that we legally are able to authorize.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a point of order. I think we have a motion in front of us.
Yes, we do. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and basically table this until, uh, the meeting of October eighth, where we're going to go ahead and basically get our city attorney, city staff, and the Personnel and Budget Committee to do some additional research and be able to formulate, uh, some scenarios, complete with a draft that we'll bring to the October eighth meeting.
So can we repeat the motion? Was the motion, all that stuff?
Yes, the motion was that we're going to revisit this on October eighth, and in the meantime, we'll bring it to the Personnel and Budget Committee. In addition, our city attorney will go ahead and do whatever research he needs to, to validate anything above and beyond the law enforcement arm, and city staff will go ahead and continue to provide information of the public purchase expenditure policies and come up with some examples and a draft that we'll have available for October eighth. Did I get it all? I'm not saying it again, somebody, somebody give me a motion here.
We got it. We have it.
Good, we got it. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried, you guys may be go horse on that. Comments, reports, and items of appreciation? Let's start over with Councilmember Sullivan tonight.
Well, I'd like to thank Jasper for the time he spent talking with me today and the email communications and Todd. I do appreciate that. I wasn't trying to be a pest, just trying to make sure we're doing the right thing, being fiscally responsible. Upcoming this week, I think we have Murf Puck? I got Transit tomorrow, Wednesday? Other than that, I don't think I have anything.
But you don't get mileage, you can take the bus to that meeting.
It's actually right here.
M V R T on Wednesday, and then we have the, uh, you said Murf Puck?
Yep.
And that, what day is that? So we have both M V R T and Murf Puck on Wednesday. Okay, you're going to be a busy guy. Okay, anything else? Councilmember Favelas.
So we had the, uh, the, a fly-in at the airport, um, on, on Sunday, and, uh, I want to extend a personal thank you to all the city employees that were involved with, uh, with helping with some tables and some chairs and putting up the, the sign across the street and, and all the things that, that helped make it a, a great time for, uh, for the people here in La Sure and families, and it was kind of cool to see all the pilots and we had a lot of planes. It was, uh, it was a lot of fun and, uh, and that, I think that, that, um, it's important to be saying thank you for, uh, to the city for the things that they are doing behind the scenes to make all of the events, for all of the, uh, the service clubs that help do things in the community. We're here to foster a relationship between the, um, even through the complan, um, with the service clubs and the, and the city. And, uh, I think it's very important that we, we start talking about that when these things go on, because it, it, they're going above and beyond. I, I happen to be pulling some, some tables and chairs out of the lodge and, uh, and Andy Saminsky, who wasn't even on City Time at that time, stopped and came downstairs and helped carry up forty-something chairs, so I, you know, I, I gotta say thank you, because it's, it's a big help. Uh, let's see, that aside, uh, nothing from Murf Puck yet, we don't have anything there. You know, we haven't gotten to any of the new meetings yet, this is the first one I got for the city, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Well, I have three things. One, appreciation for Jasper and the blog that he's doing periodically on the, on the, uh, website, and then I get it on my email, through the city email, I guess. I think that's, uh, uh, very informative and hopefully, I don't know if you can keep track of how many hits you're getting on that, appreciate you doing that. Secondly, uh, we have the town hall coming up September nineteenth for the debriefing for the downtown master plan, and I hope, Jasper, can you comment on how that's being communicated? How will the, how will the E D A members, Planning Commission, know that this is coming up and they're specially invited and citizens and so forth? And then third thing, kind of relates to that public comment, directly relates to that, um, we have five parameters for the, for the citizens, and then, and then the mayor reads the school board parameter after. I, I'd like to have the, what our parameter is on how we respond to the public comment or don't respond, have that up there along with the, the parameters for the public. That whole thing about listening to the public and then not responding, um, confuses me sometimes. And I think we ought to spell out why, what the school board is going to do about what is said, or what not, the city council. We need to spell out our parameters as a city. Excuse me, I, did I say school board all along here? Similar, similar situation. We need to spell out what the city will do or won't do with that public comment and when, and put that up on the screen, just like the, what, what the community is, their parameters are.
We could actually add, we could actually add that right here on our public comment, some additional narrative right here.
That'd be good therein, but also up on the...
On the screen as well.
Yeah, so the public knows.
We could probably just add something right here, you know, in regards to what we can and can't.
Because not everybody that's sitting here has this in front of them.
That's correct, yep. Anything else?
Nope.
Well, we, do you want to go ahead and answer Councilmember Johnson's concern about the town hall on September nineteenth? Do it after we're all done and get to it?
I can do it at the end.
Okay. Councilmember Huntington.
Um, as we have already mentioned, Murf Puck this week and, uh, M R V T. But I'd like to just say to the, uh, two colleagues of mine, the mayor and John Favelas, to, uh, the Lions and their service stuff and what they do, I don't know if that's your biggest fundraiser of the year, or?
Oh, no.
No. But I had a great time. It's one of my favorite things to do when, other than giant celebration, because I love planes, but, uh, you guys, both watching you guys actually work is kind of cool. On the other side of it, uh, being a participant as far as a, uh, part of the public and seeing that, it was a great time yesterday, so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. That guy's the one that did all the work. Councilmember Croppman.
Very quickly, I, I'd like us to consider as a council casting visions or looking forward. We get wrapped around the axle with very important stuff, but sometimes we're losing the big picture. Let me give you one. We need to do something about promoting La Sure as a healthy, good-looking community, people caring about it. I'm not sure what that'll mean, but I'll give you one example. One of our neighboring cities has an ordinance that deals with bringing in your garbage can. We got people in this town that don't do it. Now, I don't like going around enforcing that, talking to neighbors, but the point is, we need to get an ethos that we don't live that way in this community. And if we can promote it in some way positively, I, I just to cast a vision, that's one example. There are others, others of us have ideas like that. So if we can just kind of work that in, maybe in our retreat when we come in in January, whoever's on the council at that time, I, it, it's an important piece that we look forward and we, we look beyond just all the stuff that comes right in front of us all the time and kind of vision a little bit. That's all I have.
Well, I think if I, if I could just quickly respond to that, I know that, uh, it's probably been about a year by now, but, uh, one of the conversations that we had was something to maybe develop, uh, some sort of a prize or whatever for maybe the yard of the month or something like that. And I certainly think that, uh, what you're bringing up here has a lot of merit to it. I think that we can do a lot to promote our community. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea, and I'm sorry we never have had the opportunity to finish up on that conversation.
We're, we're busy people, but the point is, we all need to come up with ideas, whatever they might be, and figure out ways to pursue them at the right time, that's all.
Thank you so much. How about our city attorney, Coriel? Anything tonight, sir?
Oh, sir.
Okay. How about our city clerk slash H R slash communications expert? Boy, you guys are making this easy for me tonight. Well, city administrator, uh, Croppman, why don't we go ahead and turn it...
My alter ego over there.
I'm getting, I'm getting tired, too, guys, I can hardly talk anymore.
It, it'll come out of your non-stipend, just so you know.
Jasper.
Right. So I'll address, uh, the question about how we're marketing this. I'm just, we have a, an infographic out on Facebook talking about it, so it's out there. Um, we're looking to do some things, uh, within the community. We've talked about putting some flyers up at various businesses, the mall, um, you know, the Friendly Confines Cheese Shop, Rodamockers, to try and get people to come and, and, and visit us on the nineteenth. Trying to think, what was the other, was there another part of that question, Dave? As far as what we're doing and how we're going to try to get people?
We especially want the Planning Commission members, the E D A and city council members to come.
Yep, and we'll specifically invite them, um, all. So we'll make sure that they're all there as well, or they're at least invited. So, yeah, that'll be, that'll be a good event. I think it'll be, we're, I know Sam is, is excited about it. She's trying to come up with ways to make it unique, um, trying to get some of the local vendors involved with maybe bringing some sort of unique, um, dish or something like that, the downtown businesses, um, because it is over kind of the, the dinner time, so to have some sort of food that, you know, maybe a business can showcase what they do and say, oh, yeah, this is, this is what we, this is, this is one of the items that we have. She's working on that to try to get another, like a downtown business or aspect involved with this whole event. So, um, one thing I wanted to touch base on, and I'm happy with, uh, what's going on with Second Street, is that, um, we had a meeting with the contractor, and by we, it was myself and a couple other city staff members, to try and figure out how do we finalize this project, uh, within a timely manner? And what we basically did is we, we pushed the contractor, said, well, the boulevard work that's been done is not acceptable. What can, what, what are some of our options? You know, we kind of talked for a while, and then we, we started talking about what we would like to see and what our timeline is for, uh, getting the project closed out. And what that means is that city council final accepts it, and then that warranty period starts, uh, we make our final payment to them, and it's, it's, it's done, we look at it in two years, and then they fix everything that, that may be cracked or, or whatever.
So that hasn't happened as of yet?
No, you guys have not accepted the project yet. But what we came up with is, uh, what, what we're going to do is a change order, and what that... and what that means is we change one of the aspects of the project. So in the original bid, we bid out just basic soil amendments and seed for the boulevards. And usually, that works well. This time, there were all these different factors, soil, I think, was poor. But what we did is a change order, so that basically what that means is that we're not, what we've negotiated, we're not going to get charged for any of the work that they've done. We're going to get credit for that. And then they're going to take that credit off of, well, I'll, I'll back up a little bit. We gave residents the option of choosing to either keep the boulevard the way it is, if they have it well-established and there's grass and it's acceptable to them, they can do that. The other option is for them to bring in sod and do sod. And now is the time of the year to do sod, but there's some prep work and things like that. But the change order, basically, it, it'll, from our rough calculations, everybody except for one person wants sod. And, you know, and I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with what it takes to maintain sod, but it looks beautiful when you first put it down. But you have to take care of it, otherwise it will die, and everything else that's underneath there will live. So, or, you know, grow up, so you'll have weeds. But you need to water it, and that's very clear, and we were clear in the letter that we sent that, you know, after 30 days of the sod being installed, then it is no longer the, the contractor's deal, it's the, the property owner's deal to maintain. So out of everybody, I think only one person wanted to keep the boulevard grass that was there. And really, if it's established and it's, it's growing well, then that's the route to take. That's the more long-term solution. But we wanted to make sure the residents were happy with the outcome. So what we negotiated was, basically, we got a credit for what they've done already. So the, I think it was like $14,000 is what was in the budget for the boulevard. And then the difference between what sod costs and what we paid already is what we'd have to pay to have sod, because sod, sod costs more than the seeding that goes on. So I think it's a good compromise, and it, it is not costing us any more than if we would have put sod in right away in the contract. So there's no, to me, there's no added cost to the city, but we are getting, you know, if they choose, if the resident chooses sod on the boulevard. And that should be happening in the next week and a half. They should start doing that work. The idea is that they can get this finalized out by 30 days after they install it. So by November 1st is when we're hoping that sometime in November, we can do final acceptance. So I think it's a good resolution. The original timeline that they had was to have this drag out into next summer. And that's just, I don't want to, I don't want to leave this out there that long. So I thought it was a good, good solution to kind of a tough problem. But, you know, obviously, the residents on Second Street are aware of this. They've received the letter. And if, basically, they, they have to, in the letter, they have to accept the, the boulevard as is and accept that they're going to maintain it as of that day when they sign the letter, or they do the sod and know that it's 30 days after it's installed that they have to maintain it, so.
When's the cutoff for responding on that?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but.
Because I haven't yet.
Yeah, um, just give us a call, so.
How about the qual, how do, how do they know that, that the quality of the sod is decent and has a decent chance, even though they water it, of, of being successful?
Well, it's, it's on the sod contractor, so the sod farm that they're using is Nagel, and I've used them before, they're, they're good quality sod, they're a good quality sod farm. So I know that they're using a reputable group to do that. It's not just cutting sod from some, some other place. It's, it's a, it's a legit organization. And, you know, if they bring in sod that's poor, we're not going to accept it. That's, it's pretty simple. So, yeah, that's, that's my update on that. It's good, I'm happy with the resolution that we came up with. It was, it's a, I mean, it's a battle. It didn't, it didn't do what it was supposed to do, and then we have to kind of come up with a solution. And I know people have been kind of upset about it, and it's kind of been kind of the black cloud over what I think is a good project. It's one of our, you know, first reconstruct projects we've done, and we've gotten caught up on the boulevard of all things, when everything else has gone fairly well. But that's the way it is. I mean, it's the most visible part of the project. So I think moving forward, if we have projects in the future, we will likely just do sod. And that's what we'll have right away. There will be a little bit added cost, but, you know, you look at a two and a half, $2 million project, and it costs an extra $30,000 to do sod. It's a small percentage, and if we would have done that, we would have had this project closed out months ago, so. But, yeah, that's a little update, I'm, I'm happy with it, and, and, yeah, it's good. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I do have a couple of things. First off, I want to remind everybody that our candidate forum for our six individuals that are seeking either reelection or election for city council positions will be held on October 23rd at 6:00 PM. And that's going to be right here at city council chambers. We will go ahead and record the entire process so that we'll have it available for Facebook as well as live stream, and depending on what happens with the media com situation. And secondly, I'd like to go ahead and extend a thank you to my fellow city council members for all the hard work you guys do. We've had some pretty tough last couple of months in particular with a lot of things that we've had to address. So thank you for being up to task, and thank you for representing our city. And with that, I'll go ahead and call for a motion for adjournment.
So moved, in behalf of Ben.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, you guys. I can hard, I cannot even.